Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this meeting in the Bloomington City Council to order. Tonight is Monday, June 28th, 2021. We'll start our meeting, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, good evening, welcome. Good to see members of the council back again, once again, tonight, and members of the public as well, and thanks to everybody who's tuning in and watching tonight. We have a full agenda, once again, tonight, and one thing we will start with, as we always do, is our roll call of the council. If we could do the roll call, please.
Beloga.
Present.
Carter.
Present.
Coulter.
Present.
Lohman.
Physically here.
Martin.
Present.
Nelson.
Here.
Mayor Bussey.
Here.
Records show that all seven members of the Bloomington City Council are present this evening. We also, we move on to item number three, is the approval of our agenda. And as we look at our agenda this evening, we do have a couple of introductory items. We're going to have a visit from Hannah Picotty Sharp, Dave Hutchinson, and an update on the service providers in Bloomington Hotels, and are our introductory items. Under hearings and resolutions, we have a resolution regarding the Justees Coalition, and we have three public hearings to look at. Under our organizational business, which is a bit more of our study session-type items that we have tonight to talk over a few things, it includes a closed session regarding the fleet garage location acquisition discussion. So at that point, we will go into closed session, and we will go into a private closed session. We'll clear the council chambers, and we'll have that discussion, and then come back into open session, simply to close the meeting. We won't be making any decisions at that time. We don't make any decisions in closed session, but we will come back into open session, simply to close the meeting and adjourn for the evening. So, council, is there anything additional on the agenda that you'd like to add, or corrections you'd like to make? Hearing none, I would move approval of tonight's agenda.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Eicheldinger.
Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye.
We have a 7-0 vote, and we have another agenda for this evening. Item four on our agenda is the public comment period, a 20-minute period at the beginning of each council meeting, where we allow folks to talk to the council on items not on tonight's agenda for up to five minutes. We break it down into two parts. We have item 4.1, which is a response, and item 4.2, the actual public comment period. Item 4.1, a response to our prior meeting's public comments. Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Good evening. At our previous meeting, we had a number of folks who appeared before the city council, only two asked specific questions, at least of the city manager, so that's what I'll be responding to this evening. Mr. Michael Picard addressed the council regarding concerns about the city's policy related to responsibility for damages that may occur off of the city golf course as a result of players on the golf course, and specifically asked if we could identify other cities that have a policy similar to ours, or other golf courses that have a policy similar to ours. And I have spoken to a public course, a city manager for a public course, and a private course representative. I do not have the actual policy, so what I will do is commit to Mr. Picard that by the end of this week, I will have a fulsome answer that will include policies if I have them, and if not, will at least include the information that I get directly from individuals associated with those golf courses. The second issue or questions raised were from Ms. Amber Mathwig, and she asked a couple questions. One was about security for peaceful assemblies, and especially how the city or the Bloomington Police Department will protect peaceful assemblies from people with concealed weapons or vehicles being used as weapons, and then asked additional questions about the police department training, and specifically if we do training on how to identify white extremists, and also what the police department is doing to ensure officers do not hold white supremacist views. We have always provided security and traffic control for peaceful assemblies, and will continue to do so, so long as we have advanced notification of those events, and organizers are willing to work with us, and even if that doesn't happen, once we become aware that assembly is occurring, we have staff that will be out there to try and protect public safety, both for those who are assembling and those who may be passing through the area. We've had to work with both private citizens and, for example, the Mall of America regarding protesters exercising their Second Amendment rights, and so we have a lot of experience working in that specific area. We do rely on our relationship with the FBI through the Joint Terrorism Task Force to provide intelligence and investigative updates on all extremists, including white supremacists. The chief has recently attended a monthly FBI debrief with other police leadership as well on this topic. The chief also says we vigorously investigate all complaints against our officers to include activities and conduct that are done outside of their employment. White supremacy has been presented in past departmental training, and we are confident that the access to body-worn cameras is one of the measures that will make sure that behavior of that nature will be captured, and will actually prevent that type of behavior from being in evidence. So I think that the bottom line is that among the, well, one of the questions was about the 100 hours, and so the 100 hours of training that our police department goes through. And we do have what we feel are probably the best-trained police officers in the state of Minnesota, the amount of time that we spend specifically on that, and we do cover issues like this. So I think the most recent, if the follow-up question is, when did that occur, that training? The most recent was likely in 2018, when we were working with a couple consultants to raise awareness of issues of race and white privilege, and those kinds of issues that the police department is part of those trainings as well. So that is the response to questions from two weeks ago. Mr. Mayor and council members, happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Council, any questions? Council member Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city manager. So on the golf piece, I wonder if we, I don't know how difficult it is to look at more than just one municipality and one private, but to just try to, I know that that can take a little bit of time, but I think it would be helpful to know, it may take you more than by the end of this week, to understand kind of what other municipalities are kind of doing. I think that's kind of the spirit of what the gentleman was looking for, and I believe he's here tonight.
Yes.
So if we could...
Mr. Mayor and council members, I have made inquiries with multiple cities. I've only spoken to one of those cities. So the, yeah, I'm just...
It's more so they're not getting back to us, which underscores what I was saying earlier, that it's going to take us some time to get to that. So thank you, city manager, for looking into that.
Additional questions? Seeing none, we will move on to item 4.2, which is our public comment period. As I said, a 20-minute period at each council meeting, where we allow residents up to five minutes to speak on items not on tonight's agenda. And we will, we have our shot clock working again, so if you are missing comments, if you could just keep track of your time, and make sure you exceed, you don't exceed the five minutes, and we do that to make sure that everybody has equal amount of time, and no more than that. We, this is not a time for back and forth. We do not necessarily answer questions unless it's questions of clarification. It's just a matter of time for us to take input, and then we will answer the questions or address any of the items brought up at the subsequent council meeting, when Mr. Verbrugge or members of the council will take on the questions that are asked. So we do have four people who called ahead of time and asked to speak, and got their names on the list. Amber Mathwig was the first person on the list. Ms. Mathwig, are you with us this evening?
Mr. Mayor, we received a late communication that she was unable to be here at the last...
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Mike Picard, Mr. Picard.
Mayor, council members.
Good evening, welcome.
Recently in Colorado, parts of the engine of an airplane in flight fell off, with the largest piece being a cowling ring. It landed on a homeowner's pickup and rolled to the front door of the house. Did the airlines talk to the homeowner about the assumed risk of living below a flight path? Did they ask the homeowner to identify the pilot? A stupid scenario, but similar to the one I am living with as a neighbor to Dwan Golf Course.
Mr. Picard, can I interrupt for just a moment here? If I could ask you just to angle the microphone just a little bit more, I'm having a little trouble here, and if you could do that, that'd be perfect. Thank you so much.
In April, the windshield of my truck parked in my driveway was damaged by a golf ball. Dwan and the city manager have absolved the city and Dwan of any responsibility to pay for this damage. They have decreed that I, like all my neighbors, are responsible to see, report, and then collect funds from the offending golfer. This policy is justified by the city manager as assumed risk. Assumed risk I took on by buying a house built in 1954 that a golf course opened in 1970 has implemented. Homeowners become aware of this policy only at the time of damage. If you jump out of an airplane with a parachute, there's a risk the parachute might not open. Every single time, that is assumed risk. If you ride a motorcycle without a helmet, there's a risk of head injury in an accident. Every single time, that is assumed risk. The individual chooses the activity that has an assumed risk or injury or damage to property. They choose, not you. You cannot impose assumed risk on others. There is no assumed risk on my part or my neighbors. There is a potential hazard to me and other property owners every time Dwan and the city of Bloomington allows paying customers on their property to launch projectiles toward our houses. We have zero say in who plays, yet you have imposed on us 100% of the risk for their actions. Why 100% responsibility to me and my neighbors? Why not 20% me, 80% you? 50-50? 80-20? How about 99%, 1%? That's $4.50 toward the replacement of my windshield. No, 100% on me and zero on you. If I was a facetious person, I would say I'm surprised Dwan has not sent me a bill for the golf ball I still have that broke my windshield. Dwan's assumed risk is a false doctrine. You act like you are exempt from any rules and regulations you routinely impose on other businesses. Sell Dwan off. The neighborhood will benefit from a new owner who is not of this misguided mindset. No one is above the law, and you are not above the rules and regulations you routinely impose on other businesses. Remember all the restrictions imposed at the last council meeting during the zoning change? How is it that Dwan is not required to insure or budget for the inevitable damage to neighboring properties? What I think should happen: pay for the replacement of my windshield. Change this absurd policy based on misapplied assumed risk. Implement in writing a more equitable policy. Have Dwan insure and budget for the inevitable damages that will occur from owning a golf course. Here's my question. I moved into my house in 2007. My question is, in the 14 years I have lived across from Dwan, what screening and netting projects has the management of Dwan and city of Bloomington budgeted for and completed along the perimeter of the fencing to keep errant golf balls from leaving the course? This is two walks, two different days, Chawan Avenue down to Xerxes, the northern perimeter of your golf course. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Picard. Sally Ness, Ms. Ness.
Thank you. Can I get the overhead? I'm requesting the city revisit their vote that changed the city code to include a cultural campus in the FD2 zone areas. I ask that the city revisit their vote to change the city code for property in the FD2 zone. A recent exchange with council pointed out the purpose of 21.205 freeway commercial zoning districts. Provide space for commercial uses that may be incompatible with residential uses or other intensive-type land uses. Maximize tax base. Accommodate development intensities that can support high-quality, frequent transit service. Encourage a citywide balance of land use types. The cultural campus that includes the previous uses that were not approved does not fit the purpose of the freeway commercial zoning district, and more specifically, does not fit the purpose of the freeway development FD-2 district. The city approved a change in the city code that permits the following uses that were not previously permitted, without identifying why each use was not permitted. The council should have been informed why a use was not compatible, or why it was injurious, and why it is now compatible and not injurious. During the hearing, staff even stated that uses such as a place of assembly as a standalone would not work, but at 50% it works. That does not make sense. Example: This property cannot be a place of assembly or indoor recreation in FD2. It is not compatible and/or it is injurious. But if it is 50% place of assembly, 45% indoor recreation, and 5% museum, it can be. It does not make sense that alone the uses are not compatible and/or they are injurious to the area, but if combined, they are now compatible and not injurious. Additionally, these three uses likely do not bring the same amount of skilled work with good wages and benefits that the current zoning provides. That is not good for East Bloomington. These two individual properties cannot be a place of assembly or indoor recreation. But if the properties are combined, could be a place of assembly allowed at 100% of 50% of the property, indoor recreation allowed at 90% of building or 45% of property, museum allowed at 10% of property or 5% of property. Again, it does not make sense. Concerns with compliance, especially conditional use permits with moving parts. Any condition that has what has been described as moving parts is difficult to assure compliance, and often relies on neighboring properties, and therefore causes conflict. A council member questioned staff about compliance, and the response, the following is the response: "If we receive a complaint about one particular use being out of compliance with conditions of approval, then we would do an investigation typically performed by environmental health and planning." Staff would be involved in that. There are various reasons why this does not work. Often, environmental health is notified after the infraction, and therefore relies on verbal information provided by the subject of the complaint. The staff report indicates that products for sale will be produced on site, but an email from staff after the hearing states differently, may or may not include items produced on site. The freeway development FD-2 definition includes "to protect the freeways from congestion by proper location of heavy traffic generators and exclusion of most retail businesses." Table 1 states retail sales incidental up to 10% of floor area for products manufactured on site. This should have been clarified before any vote. Loss of tax revenue in FD2 zone due to the addition of tax-exempt uses previously not permitted. Additionally, if the city allows a place of assembly, event center, and indoor recreation, all assembly uses, it would be difficult to argue that a standalone place of assembly is more injurious than a place of assembly, event center, and indoor recreation. Therefore, it could be argued that a place of assembly, assembly schools should be a conditional use in all freeway zoned properties. Five, loss of tax revenue in other freeway development zone properties. If a place of assembly is not injurious in FD-2, it would be difficult to argue it is injurious in other freeway development zones. It would also be difficult for the city to argue other freeway development needs to remain income-generating properties that provide skilled work with good wages and benefits, but the east side does not. This area in East Bloomington should remain zoned for businesses to employ skilled workers, production on site, which means higher income with benefits. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ness. Mr. Thule.
May I get the overhead as well?
I think it's still on.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, thank you.
Thanks. I asked that the city revisit their vote tonight to change the city code to allow for a cultural campus that permits uses not previously allowed for property in FD2 zone. The city code change affects all FD2 properties and the neighboring properties, and yet there is no input from other property owners. These owners bought property in the freeway development zone that is designed for a limited mixture of compatible uses, and to accommodate certain uses, a large an area, and with a metropolitan clientele, and the city has changed that without input from these owners or the neighboring properties. Previous uses that were not allowed are uses that are incompatible with surrounding properties, and if allowed to go forward, may drive out other businesses, leading to a loss of value, which is also a loss of tax revenue to the city. The cultural campus that adds uses not previously allowed does not provide space for commercial uses that may be incompatible with residential uses or other less intensive types of land uses. Maximize tax base opportunities for the community, and accommodate development intensities that can support high-quality, frequent transit service, and encourage a citywide balance of land use types, which is a purpose of the 21.205 freeway commercial zoning districts. A revisit to this vote is needed. I believe that the council members here were not properly informed by the Planning Commission regarding the FD2 zones at all, so I strongly hope you guys take a good look at this and do a revote, revisit the vote. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thule. Those are the folks who called ahead of time. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on items not on tonight's agenda?
Good evening, everybody. Hope you're all doing wonderfully well. I'm doing pretty good myself.
If you could state your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Rod Wilson. Many residents of Bloomington, I wonder how many of you have actually been down here? I mean, it's what our tax dollars pay for, and up until, well, last meeting, I had never been here myself, and it's a fine area and such, so I would urge you to come down for a council meeting sometime and just kind of get the feel for it. It's actually, the council meetings are here to make our, to make our city, where am I here? The council is here to make our city work to guide, to guide and represent what it is we want for our city. There is a cool group in the city currently now called Residents for a Better Bloomington to help working together. Let's get it done, right? City council, I mean, isn't it about getting it all done? And by the way, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to address you, I don't know if tonight I will get you to giggle, but at one point I had, well, I got a good smile there, so at one point I had gotten you to giggle after I had done the phone-in thing, and so if you ever want a good laugh, you can tune into my Sunday joke of the week on Ushook.com. That all aside, laughter is an important thing. We can help to give a good attitude to ourselves as we work hard to help build the foundation of our friend, our family-friendly city. It's important. I remember a time in our city, long, long ago, when we could leave our doors open. I don't believe we ever, we were ever meant to push hate as a strong word, but when I'm leaving after a run, oh, that, sorry, I didn't expect to get nervous. I go to the Activity Center at Jefferson, and I go for a run, and many times I talk to the students as I'm leaving, and I always say to them, I say, "Don't let yourself get indoctrinated today." And many times, I actually receive fist bumps from these, some of these kids, because they are aware of what's going on in our schools, and the values of family and God, and stuff that are being cast aside in many, many ways. And so tonight, I'm going to leave you with a quote from a man of clarity, Mr. Dennis Prager. I don't know if you've ever heard of him, but he has a site called PragerU, where they do five-minute videos. And on June 24th, Dennis said on his show, "It's not Democrat or Republican, it's that the left wants to destroy the West, while the right wants to preserve the West." Mr. City Manager, any possibility we can get PragerU videos to play in the schools? They're only five minutes long. Thank you for my time at our meeting tonight. God bless, we Patriots, America.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak this evening? Please, come forward.
Do I need to sign in?
Yes, you do.
I'm going to be the first person tonight to sign in.
When you get done, if you could hand it back to Dorot and everybody else who has spoken, they will sign in, they'll pass it around and sign in. How about that? Thank you, appreciate that.
My name is Carol Kramer. And I'm another person here tonight asking to revisit the vote to change the city code for property in the FD2 zone. The purpose of 21.205 freeway commercial zoning district is to, two, provide space for commercial uses that may be incompatible with residential uses or other less intensive types of land uses. Three, maximize tax base opportunities, which we know we need, for the whole community. Four, accommodate development intensities that can support high-quality, frequent transit service. Seven, encourage a city... Seven, encourage a citywide balance of land use types. The cultural campus that includes the previous uses that were not approved does not fit the purpose of the freeway commercial zoning district and more specifically does not fit the purpose of the freeway development FD2 district. The city granting this code change would mean the city would be expected to grant other requests. For example, why allow the city code change adding uses previously not approved, yet deny a request to add a garage while another smaller one remains on the property? That would be hard to argue, that a small garage on an individual's property is more injurious. The precedent set by one applicant means that the city must give the same consideration to any other applicant. This opens up a multitude of opportunities for property owners to be granted almost unlimited use of their property, regardless of neighboring properties and existing codes. An example where the city was concerned with setting a precedent and was concerned that there would be requests that would follow was the resident request to the city to allow a step van. The resident had received approval from the neighboring homes. The council discussion included the concern that approval would generate additional requests and declined the request. The new city code allows uses not previously permitted, and the council needs to revisit their vote and decline the cultural campus as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
City Council, I'm Barb Schneider, resident of this fair city. There's just
If you could put the microphone a little closer to your mouth, please.
Is that better?
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My concern regarding what they have been speaking about with the zoning comes from spending quite a bit of time in that area and on good days, bad days, good weather days, bad weather days. And thinking of the propensity of bicyclists, the traffic considerations, I really didn't hear much about that. I didn't read too much about it in the planning commission report. And if there has been a traffic study done about this, to, thinking of the zoning change alone, I'm not thinking of the specific organization that wanted to affect the zoning change. I'm thinking of the change itself. The traffic that would be generated right there next to MOA, all the new hotels, IKEA, and bordering on a neighborhood, I think that that has been overlooked. And for that reason, I agree, I think that this should be revisited. Also, the tax losses for the land use, the building uses, the, as well as anyone in this taxing, in this zoning district could also come up with things that would not be revenue generating. Quite a bit of a loss for both the county and the city. Also, two weeks ago, I was talking about Creekside, and I was delighted to find out that it is being opened. So, thank you for that. That's the end of my comments.
Thank you. Others who would like to speak? Ms. Wilson, do we have connection again? I think we might have had some technical difficulties. Do we have anyone on the line who would like to address the council via the telephone?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not 100% sure, but let's try.
All right.
Mona, this is Chris. Can you hear me?
Yes. Hi, Chris.
Hi. Do we have any callers? Do we have any callers that wish to speak on Agenda Item 4.2, the public comment period?
We don't have any participants over the phone.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. I'll make one last call if anyone would like to speak. If not, I will close tonight's public comment period, and I will commit to the folks who have brought this up under Item 8.4, our city council policy and issue update. Not a problem. I will, we will bring this up. I will bring this forward and see if anyone would like to move this forward and reconsider this vote and revisit this vote. And if it is not brought forward by one of the members of the council, or if it fails, if the vote fails, the issue moves forward. The code change has been approved and already approved, and this would be our opportunity to revisit it, and if we don't have a majority of the council who would like to do that this evening, then we'll move forward with it, as it is. But I will bring it up in Item 8.4, just to let you know, it will be brought up and we will vote, we will see if anyone would like to move it forward. All right? Let us move on on our agenda if we couldn't, to our introductory items. And Item 5.1, which is an update from our sheriff, Hennepin County Sheriff David Hutchinson is joining us via WebEx. I believe he is there. Sheriff Hutchinson, are you with us this evening?
Yes, I am, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and city staff, and most importantly, the residents of Bloomington, where I call home as well. So obviously, it's one of my favorite cities in this great county. Thank you for allowing me back to have another update. I want to thank, gotta give a shout out to retired Chief Potts. He was a great leader and a friend of mine, but I think Chief Hartley is as capable, if not more. And we have a great working relationship already. We've been through some things with some of the unrest and things we've dealt with in the last few months and of course, the last couple of years I've been in office. As you all know, it's been challenging a year and a half or two years, not only for the sheriff's office, but the city of Minneapolis and a few of our suburban cities with some very bad things that happened, the killing of Mr. Floyd, et cetera. So, we've had a rough year. I'm very, very proud of my staff. They've worked not only long hours, but they've done it with professionalism and are, again, kind of biting off more than we can chew with some things. But again, I'm very proud to be the sheriff of this county, to serve the people to the utmost of our ability. The sheriff's office will face diversity head-on. Our goal is not to miss out on anybody in the public, but also make sure that we keep our cities and our counties safe, and we do that for the majority of our populations as well. I'm just, again, proud to be here. Little things I'll talk about is the collaboration with your fine department. Again, we don't have a whole lot of numbers, and that goes to the professionalism of your leadership through your city, through the police department, and through the men and women who serve. We've had a few collaborations through our emergency response unit, water patrol, and some of our task forces. Four significant events that ended in, excuse me, recovery of firearms and narcotics. We've had a few investigations from fraud to harassment to violation harassment order. Again, we're very, very busy at the sheriff's office. One unfortunate thing, we'll talk about water safety. You know, Hennepin County has 103 lakes, obviously three rivers, so we're busy in that respect as well. 2020, we were up, it's 16 drownings last year. This year, already up to nine, which is a scary number. So we're working hard to aid enforcement of these lakes and rivers, especially Lake Minnetaka, but also we're partnering with places like Abby's Hope. Abby is that one beautiful young girl years ago that had an issue with the public pool that took her life ultimately. So we partnered with them, not only for safety in pools, but also, I think we passed out 75 or 80 life jackets at Lake Nekomus in about a half hour. We do swimming lessons with inner-city kids, and we're hopefully putting that out to our suburb friends as well. If anybody's interested in things like Abby's Hope or any water safety, please let us know. Water Patrol Unit would love to come and educate people on how to be safe under many beautiful lakes and rivers. As far as wellness, our employees have been through a lot, like I said. When I first got elected, I pushed for a Try Wellness program, which Try Wellness means mind, body, and spirit, which we're helping better gyms in our facilities. We have a full-time, first of its kind in the state of Minnesota, a full-time health, mental health professional. She's very, very busy. We're probably going to have to add a second one on here soon. Again, we're doing chaplain services and make sure people who are religious have those avenues. We're working with financial advisors to make sure our deputies make sound financial decisions so they can concentrate on their family and work-life ratio, which is important for stress. And one thing I'm very, very proud of, I'm very proud of our county commissioners, I think I have to give Commissioner Gotal a shout out. She's been a great partner and our commissioner down here, she's a wonderful person and wonderful leader. We've passed 7.0, the new training facility that's going to be in addition to the Northwest Training Facility in Maple Grove. This is going to be one of the best in the state when it's completed in the end of 2022, I think it starts. This facility is going to help not only our agency, the largest law enforcement agency in the county, but the escalation, crisis intervention will be put on the front and center of this training facility. Our goal is to de-escalate situations, treat people that are having mental health crisis, treat them in a better way so we don't have to use force and the person is able to be taken to get care they need. This facility is going to be great. I'm excited for it. Again, this is going to be world-class. We're going to have training for implicit bias. We're going to have tremendous things that no other training facility in the state is going to have. So we're excited for that. Again, thank you, our county commissioners, especially our great Debbie Gotal. As we've all seen in the last year and a half, not only in Minneapolis, but Brooklyn Center and a few other cities within the county, some really tough times, some unrest, some very stressful times for the community and for our staff and law enforcement. It's time to heal. We're doing everything we can heal. Justice was served, and I think we are going to see that trend go on. Law enforcement needs to change. We are changing, and I think it's important when people talk about reform. People understand that law enforcement knows we need to reform, we need to do better. But if you look at places that talk about defund, not only locally, but nationally, you see the crime spikes and you see the loss of officers, which, you know, places like Minneapolis where they're so short, they can't provide a normal conductivity of service to the people of Minneapolis. So, of course, Hennepin County Sheriff's Office has stepped up, but, you know, we need help from other agencies. We actually put in for a grant to the state for crime suppression to get guns off the street, to get murderers off the street, to stop this hot-riding, which has at least had two people shot and one person disabled from other reckless and criminal behavior. So hopefully, we get that grant. I'm sure Minneapolis will be a part of it. The sheriff's office will be in charge of the fiduciary responsibilities so we can diva that out. So again, it's for violent crime, for education, all this stuff, crisis intervention. We're very, very excited. Hopefully, we get it. As the sheriff of Hennepin County, we've had a tough year. I've had personally a tough year dealing with a lot of stuff, but it makes me so proud to be a part of this profession. It makes me proud to be a part of Bloomington. They've helped us out when we've asked them. My number-one job will be, as long as I'm in this office, is to make sure the people of Hennepin County are the safest they can be with the resources we have available. Every day, I'm committed to working harder than the day before to make sure this place is better. My office continues working with Bloomington PD and you all in leadership, and all I ask is to make sound decisions when it comes to law enforcement and public safety, to make sure that we represent the whole community, not just a few people who happen to be the loudest. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions, concerns, but again, thank you. And the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office will be here way after I'm sheriff, our, what our mission is, to keep people safe so people can live their lives, go to work, go to school, be with their family, and do it in a safe environment. And again, we're making strides. My agency has increased diversity by a lot. One of our last detention classes was the most diverse, the higher in class in the Hennepin County Sheriff's history. Makes me very, very proud. Our membership, our sheriff's office will mirror their community we serve, and I'm just proud to be here. And with that, I can answer any questions, Mayor, or City Council. I appreciate your time tonight.
We appreciate your time, Sheriff. Thanks for being with us tonight, and thanks for the presentation and your remarks. And thank you much for the work that you and your deputies have done over the past couple of years in what I know are sometimes trying times, and you've done outstanding work, and we greatly appreciate it, and we always appreciate the support that you show the Bloomington Police Department and the people of Bloomington. And the work you do here is not overlooked. It is appreciated, it is noticed, and thank you so very much for it. I think we have a couple of questions with the council. I do want to commend you, actually. I think one of the things that I think where your office is standing out is in outreach and engagement of the community, and I wonder if you could take a moment just to talk a bit about your efforts personally, but also your department's efforts in terms of reaching out and connecting with the residents of Hennepin County and making those connections and those personal interactions that are so important in law enforcement.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, for the kind words. And yes, we have a community outreach division, which has been around for about two years, before we had a smaller community engagement division, but this community outreach division has a captain, a lieutenant, several deputies, and some civilian staff. Again, our community outreach division mirrors the community we serve. We have pretty much people from every diverse group in the county. They go out there. We do bike giveaways last weekend when we were in Richfield, giving out helmets. Again, we did a life jacket drive. This is so very, very important. Much before Mr. Floyd's killing, and other, we knew the importance of that, but now with the unrest and the distrust of law enforcement and public safety, we know we need to do a better job of providing the service to our people, regardless of what your zip code in Hennepin County, what your race, sexual orientation, religion, all that stuff. In Hennepin County, it doesn't matter to us. We want you to be safe. So we are solely but surely hoping to gain some of the trust back. It's going to take a long time, but we're never going to give up because without the community, we're nothing. We're here because the community pays us to, asks us to, elects us to be here. And again, I go out a lot. I was out all weekend with these organizations, and it's just, it's great to be a part of this. This unit's just going to grow. We're probably going to promote a sergeant and hopefully hire some other people, because we have a lot of work to do to make sure we regain some trust and show people that while there was a lot of bad stuff happening locally with law enforcement, that's still a small number of things that happened. We answer hundreds of thousands of calls a year that go right, and our goal is to make sure that happens, and our goal is to recruit diversity, and it's just to make sure people feel comfortable being here. This is one of the greatest counties, if not the greatest county in the country, and we're going to keep it that way.
Thank you, Sheriff. Council, questions? Councilmember Martin?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you, Sheriff, for being here. I very much appreciate that information. I guess just kind of generally speaking, and I can follow up with you on this later, I really appreciated the social worker that you brought on board last fall, and I know we've got folks that are doing similar work with the department, and it's come up in conversation, when do we look at expanding some of those efforts so that folks we're seeing again and again and again get connected with resources they need? As you're looking at that social worker, what, do you have any particular metrics that you're using to say now is the time that we need to invest in additional staff in this role, or just what does the trajectory of that work look like?
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate those kind words. Yes, we are. We've had social workers not only embedded in some of the suburban agencies like Bloomington, but we also embedded one in the dispatch center in Plymouth, which is the largest dispatch center. Bloomington has their own because of your large agency. But our goal, we just hired retired Chief Rizwell from Wayzetta, and he's going to head up this new program through the sheriff's office, through social services, through the county, and again, the county administration has been great about this. So his job is going to be connecting all these suburban agencies who may not be big enough to have a full-time, a need for full-time social workers. They're going to be embedded with sheriff deputies so we can respond throughout the county, because our goal is sometimes the police aren't the best people go to a call. If someone calls 911 and says, hey, you know, my husband or wife or whoever is having some suicidal thoughts, there's no weapons, they're not a danger to themselves or others at this time, but we think they need help, sometimes saying to the police Sometimes saying to police or even an ambulance with lights and sirens scares people. You know, I've been in police work 20 years and if a squad car came to my house, I would still be a little, especially if I was having some trauma, I'd be a little shook or a little scared in some cases. So our goal is to replace things when we can replace people, social workers, do an embedded social work program. It's something I've been trying for the last year and a half. Obviously other things have come up. So now that, that we're investing in, and again, thank you for the county board and the county administration to this new position with retired Chief Rizwal. We're going to get this program, it's going to be a strong program. We're going to make sure people who need services that don't necessarily require police or, or law enforcement, that they're going to get these services, not the 15th time they've called 911, which has seemed to happen throughout my career. I maybe don't have an official number, but throughout my years in the street, I always talked to guys and ladies on the street with mental health trauma. And I always tell a little story of when I was working at the transit police downtown at a garage, we're, I think we're doing paperwork. We, we heard a loud bang and kind of diverted our attention to a guy sitting in this bus garage who ended up taking the phone booth off of its holder and throwing it through a window. So I went up to him and I've dealt with him a million times and I said, you know, I'm not going to use his name, but I said, hey, what the heck's going on? And he goes, I've called 911 three times. They told me just to sit here and, and let it wear off or what have you. And so instead of taking him to jail, we took him to ATN Chicago where he had some mental health service done. He had some, you know, for narcotics abuse thing done. And now he's actually living, living a decent life. So the moral of the story is we need to get these people services. These people don't belong in jail. They don't belong in prisons. These people belong in services to make themselves better so we can continue, they can continue being a productive member of society. They can get a job, they can go to school, they can pay taxes, they can live in a house. Our goal in law enforcement is to do that, but right now we don't have the resources. You take someone to the hospital, they get out in 72 hours, the same thing happens. So I'm asking people to talk to legislators. This is not a law enforcement problem. Unfortunately, we're the, we're the first line to deal with it, but we are working with our professionals because we know we're not the best at everything. We want to get those people help so we never see them again. We have good services in jail for people like that, but they're better treated outside somewhere else. It's not only less expensive, it's more humane. So we're working a ton of stuff with that council member. And I'd love to sit down and talk to you more if you'd like.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you, Sheriff.
You're welcome, sir.
Council, anything additional?
I think I see Sean with his hand up.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Sheriff Hutchinson. Appreciate the opportunity to talk with you and appreciate your service. Just wanted to first just make a comment that I really appreciate your focus on helping make sure that the sheriff's department is responsive to the entire community by recognizing that, you know, reform is necessary and we have to do that in a way that is respectful to good police officers. It's, you know, they have to go hand in hand and, and thank you for that. I also want to just thank you for your comments about mental health services you're providing them that council member just asked you about. So thank you for that. After the last year and after those issues, I have a question that probably seems a bit mundane, but it's something that I hear from people quite a bit about and you sort of mentioned it a little bit, but there's a lot of speeding in our community. And whether it be like Normandale Boulevard, which I saw some stuff and got some questions on, or we've talked as a council about Old Shakopee Road. And I guess my question for you, because those are county roads, how does that interplay with enforcement of speeding laws and, and safety and things like that between the county and the sheriff and our Bloomington City Police?
Yes, councilmember, I agree with you. And my friend and, and, you know, fellow police executive Colonel Langer have talked about this in depth. His staff has been so busy helping with the unrest that they haven't been able to do speed enforcement, less DWI enforcement, which fatality is rather higher. People who drive fast and drive like idiots cause accidents and accidents have the propensity for death. And as far as your question, you know, the city of Bloomington is a very, very robust and in my opinion, one of the best ran police departments in the state. And I think they do a very good job. If Chief Hartley ever asked for my agency to come and assist, we definitely would. And cities like Bloomington, we don't spend a whole lot of time in unless requested for crime lab or mutual aid agreement or other things, just because again, they are very robust and they're very professional. It's one of the better police departments, like I said. So we can definitely help them if asked, but you know, if we, if we get this grant through the state for the hot rodders, et cetera, we're going to go after those people and we're going to go after them hard. It's not just hot rodding anymore. Most people who know him, you know, I'm a car guy. I, I have a few fast cars. I don't drive like an idiot because I, again, I feel for people's safety. But the last few things we saw in Minneapolis, two shootings resulted from these hot rodders. A young man was hit and now he's paralyzed. So my question or my answer to that is if requested will help, especially with this grant funding comes out, will help. And we're going to let people know that in the last year, we've been busy with the unrest and other things and we've neglected some things and I'll take responsibility for that. But we're going to come out hard. We're going to tell the people know there is laws, there's regulations and you have to follow them.
Thank you, Sheriff. And again, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, sir.
Council, anything else? Sheriff, thank you again very much for being with us this evening. I know you've got a, you've got a busy weekend coming up, I'm sure, both on the water and everywhere else. But as a Bloomington resident, I'm sure you know about Summer Fete on July 3rd. And if you'd like to join us, we'd love to see you there. It's, you know, July 3rd, so it's not the real busy day of the 4th of July. So we'd, we'd love to have you join us if you could.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll do my best, but unfortunately or fortunately I should say it's my parents' 50th wedding anniversary, July 2nd. And I'll be up north for a day and then I have to come back to obviously work Lake Penetock with all my staff because it's going to be hot, it's going to be wild out there. But I'll, I'll do my best, sir. And again, I love Bloomington, I love the leadership you guys have there. Anything you need from my office, get ahold of me 24/7. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so very much, Sheriff. We'll move on to item eight, excuse me, 5.2 on our agenda. It's an update on our service providers in Bloomington Hotels. We've asked staff to provide an update, the use of Bloomington Hotels by service providers for people experiencing homelessness and housing instability. And Erica Coleman, our HRA administrator, is here to give us an update. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right? All right. I do have a presentation. Should be coming up shortly. I thought it would be easier to go over the information if it was visual for everyone here and everyone at home, so.
Just a moment, Erica. I see it.
No problem.
Just trying to get it up here.
No problem. It is good to see everyone in person. Hi. It started in November. Nice to meet you all. There we go.
Go ahead. I'm going to get it shared on the WebEx so that
Okay.
our viewers can see it.
All right. So this is an update for service providers that are using Bloomington Hotels that have worked with city staff and city departments. So I want to be clear about that from the onset. We do know that people experiencing homelessness have been staying in Bloomington Hotels, not just most recently during the pandemic, but prior, beforehand. Staff does do a great job of reaching out to the hotels and requesting information for anyone that has long-term stays at the hotels. And so that is dependent upon the relationship that the city does have with our hotel operators in getting those responses. Otherwise, there is the relationship between Bloomington Police Department and our hotel providers, our hotel operators, where if there are calls or concerns, police do go through there. They also do provide some standard of patrol or drive-by type situation. They're not just doing security, but they are driving by and checking on it, just as a, just being a part of our, as service members of our community. So is it shared? I can't see it.
Working on it, sorry.
I think Ms. Jackson used the term filibuster earlier this evening when she was filling time, so.
Yes, because she's good at that. I will sit here and just smile.
Have I seen on the WebEx now?
Oh, it's on WebEx?
Now it's not.
Technology, we're all learning something.
We'll have to go with this one.
No problem. Can you go to slide two?
Sure.
Thank you. So just to provide a little bit of background, so the COVID-19 global pandemic, as we all are very familiar with, at the onset, there was an executive order issued by Minnesota Governor, Executive Order 2001, that had a corresponding eviction moratorium. The eviction moratorium does apply to the use of hotel rooms. This is because if people have basically entered into a contract by paying for a room, then they are considered tenants under Minnesota state law. So we are operating under that when it comes to our Bloomington Police Department, our staff, environmental health, everyone is operating under that protection. However, there is eviction for extreme circumstances. And those have to be very extreme circumstances. And currently, the eviction moratorium or the executive order has been extended, as we all know, so we're still operating under that. There has been an increase to the visibility of people experiencing homelessness in Bloomington and it has been exacerbated by the pandemic. We do have service providers that are working with the city in terms of communication and what their services are. And then the city involvement. So the city did step in. It started out as a reactive or a reactive response due to increased service calls as well as other concerns. And so there is a whole set of staff that has regular check-ins with the hotel operators as well as service providers with Bloomington Police Department. There is a temporary pandemic housing permit that was passed and we'll get into it just a little bit. And then the police department's crime prevention unit does go above and beyond with regular engagement with hotel operators and resources with people experiencing homelessness. Next slide. So I wanted to just really quickly, homelessness and housing instability, it is a very complex issue and it is people experiencing these different issues. Some of the things that we have seen or that have been reported back to us about people experiencing homelessness in Bloomington Hotels are medically fragile, both physical and mental health, domestic violence victims. So there has been concern about transparency and engagement. To be perfectly, to be clear, excuse me, I wanted to be clear that some of the, some of the updates have not been fully divulging of information because there are people experiencing or fleeing from domestic violence and there is a safety component attached to it. Economic and how, and/or housing challenges is another issue as well as additional factors. Age, gender non-binary, race and ethnicity and sexual orientation. These are all things that are contributing to people that may be experiencing homelessness and/or housing instability as well as highly mobile. So the temporary pandemic housing permit was also a response that the planning commission, the planning department did lead. And so the resolution 2021-11 was passed in February by the city council. And it creates zoning flexibility and promulgating regulations for temporary pandemic housing due to the COVID-19 global pandemic. And so what happens is, is that a plan must be submitted, the application for the permit must be submitted and it must include the hotel operator and a service provider. This is a joint application that includes joint plans for security, fire, service and housing transition. I think one thing that I was not clear on in my memo was that the expiration of the temporary pandemic housing permits is set at 180 days after the end of the executive order. So whenever the executive order for the state of Minnesota is ended, there is a 180-day window of transition for service providers, service providers that have been approved through the permitting process to move their clients out of the Bloomington Hotels. That's the, oh, sorry. That's the full extent of the timeframe. There have been four approved permits. That's it. Four approved permits. And those approved permits have led to the decrease in service calls for those hotels where there are approved permits with service providers that are working with the city of Bloomington. Next slide. So a little bit about the service providers, they are both public and nonprofit entities. They use previously seven hotels total at 230-plus rooms, spent over $12 million in Bloomington for lodging, food and services, served over 1,000 individuals, and there was a median length of stay as of today of 150 days. The majority of groups served were seniors, youth, LGBTQIA, families and BIPOC. As you can see, some of that layers in with some of the factors of complexity around homelessness. Next slide. So the current status, there are four providers that have permits that were approved. Two service providers have completely concluded services in Bloomington. They're done, they are out of the hotels. They are no longer doing services in Bloomington. The standard outcomes have been new employment, reunited with family and housed, return to congregate shelter living, staying in transitional housing. Some people have secured rental housing and others are in a program with housing support. There are two service providers remaining at two hotels. This is a clarification from my memo. In my memo, I mentioned that there is one service provider at one hotel expected to conclude services by June 30th. That is true, that service provider is a nonprofit entity. The public entity of Hennepin County is fully operating and estimated to conclude services by November. Hennepin County has 170 rooms that they have had since last year and they're still using those 170 rooms at one hotel. Next slide. Next steps. So this has been something that has started as a reaction, but has moved into being proactive and what can we do beyond just right now? And so there's been coordination and data collection. One, Hennepin County Office to End Homelessness. The city of Bloomington has been speaking with Hennepin County to, one, collect information about their coordinated entry system, the zip codes that people have identified as they are coming from Bloomington, as well as talking to them about resources. This is Hennepin County's wheelhouse in terms of human services, in terms of office to end homelessness. And so just better coordination with Hennepin County on what we can do and how we can go about it and work better as partners together. And then Bloomington Public Schools. I reached out to Bloomington Public Schools and found out that they do have, right now, 300 children that are highly mobile, experiencing homelessness and housing instability. And they are in need of help. They have asked about different programs, being in contact with different services and we will be connecting them better with Hennepin County, but we will also be staying in touch with them to understand the impact. They did, in my phone call with Bloomington Public Schools, they did let me know that Bloomington is high for human trafficking and they have lost some children to that, that they know of this year. And they are in need of better services and support. Then service provider and resources. So on top of coordinating with the entities that are working with people experiencing homelessness, we are talking with the service provider that offers unsheltered street outreach. What does that mean? There are people that are experiencing homelessness that are outside and there is a need to have trained culturally specific individuals, possibly with previous life experience, that can go and talk with them, provide services, help get them into transitional housing, a shelter to move forward with steps so that they can be stably housed. so that they can be, um, stably housed. And what does that take? And then organizing and referral of services. What this is, is we have been, um, we do have partnership with HomeLine, and HomeLine is also in the space of helping with organizing and resources and referrals and connecting people to what they need. So, right now, the next steps are just building off of that. This is pretty new for the HRA, but it's not too much that we can't handle, and we have full staff to handle it. Um, so, that concludes my presentation, and I will take any questions that anyone has.
Thank you very much for your comments to the presentation. Council questions. Councilmember Loman?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, um, when I heard 180 days, you know, I just kind of did the math from August 1st. That's basically the middle of January or February.
That's correct.
So, that's when they let folks out?
No, no, not let folks out. This isn't prison.
Seems kind of harsh to me, so.
Understood.
Or am I not understanding this?
Yep, so what it is, is that it's a pandemic. When planning brought it forward, there was not, nobody knows what the future is going to hold. So, to allow for a full transition and not just an abrupt return to possibly on the streets, 180 days is the maximum that a service provider would be able to use past the end of the pandemic, past the end of the executive order ending. So, you're right. Right now, as of today, that would be January of 2022. There is only one service provider, which is Hennepin County, that has already identified that they would like to look at possibly November because they do not want to have a mass return to unsheltered homelessness. If they are able to move people into shelters, which is really just a stopgap, it's not the end-all, the be-all, shelters are transitional housing, they will. But as of right now, according to their numbers and according to what they're seeing, they're saying November. So, yes, January of 2022, as of right now, the way the resolution was approved by the City Council is the, the latest right now as of today. But the executive order is still in play.
Mr. Veruie, something to add?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you, and Councilmember Loman. Uh, I just wanted to add, and thank you, Erica, for the information. It's, um, this is really good information, I think, both for the council and the, the public to hear. Um, I was just noticing that the Minnesota Senate tonight, actually, or earlier today, unanimously approved the housing bill that was passed by the House last week. And one of the policy components in there is a 105-day gradual scale-down, uh, related to the eviction moratorium. So, one of the things that we'll have to do, once the, uh, once the bill is presumably signed by Governor Walz and enacted, is just take a look at the timing and see if our 180 days is going to take an effect after the 105-day scale-down, uh, or if it will take effect upon signature, uh, because that will affect the timeframe. Obviously, 105 days puts it at the end of September, and another 180 days could get you through most of the harshest part of the winter, too, to address some of those concerns.
I just, I'm just concerned about that when you said 300, uh, kids, you know, in addition, or is that separate, the number?
So, yes, and I, I know it's a lot of numbers. This is only for the service providers with approved temporary pandemic housing permits. So, there are, unless there are children within the Hennepin County, Hennepin County's rooms that they have under their permit, this only applies to Hennepin County at this point. This does not apply to any of our children or anybody else that's just staying in a hotel that may be experiencing homelessness.
Yeah, um, and if I could, Councilmember, our friends at Bloomington Public Schools have told us that number has been at least that high, uh, for a while now, that there had been, there's a significant number of students within the Bloomington public system, even pre-pandemic, who are facing housing instability and homelessness.
Yeah, no, I, I've certainly, uh, helped a number of years, uh, on that particular issue. It's close to me, and I, I hope that we can, uh, continue to look at this homeless issue, uh, kind of long-term. I know we have a temporary, um, kind of situation here, but I think not only for, for those young folks that, that are out there in Bloomington, I know that those, that can impact the dollars that we get out of our schools, um, but also just in terms of this broader issue. I think we need to continue to look at this long-term. I know hotels, for me, is not the place to have folks, but, um, I think we, as a council, should, should look at this, uh, more. Thank you for this very much.
Thank you.
Council additional questions? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the city manager kind of brought up what I was going to bring up, and, and that was the, the offer up to the eviction moratorium. So, I, um, just to kind of circle back on that, I would certainly appreciate knowing a little bit more, you know, whatever, obviously, when it, if and what, well, when it becomes law and, and, you know, how that affects our, our operations. And, excuse me, for the record, I'm, I am not sick, but the dry air has made me sound just like this. So, that's, that's the story there. Um, and I, you know, this is, this is something that I, I have brought up before, and this is really just in the nature of a comment. You know, what, what others have said is, is that the reality of, of homelessness and, and housing instability, and, and it's particularly acute, obviously, among schoolkids, and I'm going to be very careful to not get too emotional here, but I am a parent and about to become one again. And, you know, this, this was a crisis even before the pandemic, and it, it has only, it has only worsened as a result. And, I mean, this is the result of decisions that, that folks have made, folks on city councils and in county boards and at the state to, to not fund the services that frankly are needed to address this very real crisis. And, you know, I, I lay, I don't know if you want to call it the blame, but I, I lay the responsibility for that at, you know, at our feet, at our elected officials' feet. And, you know, at a, at a certain point, you just got to say, these are things we need to do. These are our neighbors, and we need to take care of them. And, you know, one of the, not long after, excuse me, not long after I, I started on the city council, I, Councilmember Nelson and I went to, uh, meet with folks at Normandale Lakes Estates, who were displaced because new management had taken over. And the first person I met there was the principal at Poplar Bridge because he knew he was losing two to three classes worth of kids just from that one housing, um, development. And, you know, this is, I mean, these are, like I said, these are our neighbors. And, and I, you know, I, I just hope, I hope it doesn't take another pandemic for us to, to realize the, the action that is required to address this issue.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, thank you for all of the information you shared and for bringing up this really important data point, too. And, I, I mean, I, I, similarly, I'm like trying not to get choked up when I think about it. So, I know others on council have heard this before, but before I was on council and I was really involved with the Bloomington Housing Coalition, one of the things that really inspired me to run for council was the fact that, well, it was when I found out the school social worker told me that there were 280 homeless kids in the Bloomington School District. And again, that was before the pandemic. And so, I really appreciate the point that you brought up, that homelessness has been a crisis in Bloomington before the pandemic, before there were people living in hotels, um, at higher numbers. And so, um, I just really want to thank you and your leadership on this, the whole HRA, everybody in the police department that's been working on this. And then, I guess my question would be, um, what are kind of the plans moving forward to continue to work in partnership with Hennepin County and the schools? Is there a coalition or a group forming? I say coalition because I come from the advocacy space, but task force, whatever you want to call it, to really start thinking about how we even more strategically leverage the resources that we all have and that we know are coming in, right, through the American Rescue Plan and to the state, wherever?
So, thank you, Mayor Bussie, Councilmember Carter. Thank you for the question and for the, uh, recognition. I appreciate it. Yes, there's plans. I'm, I'm a very strategic person. I like to think through. So, a part of that is a few things. One, collecting data. We have to continue, uh, we have to start and continue to collect data about people experiencing homelessness, highly mobile, and housing instability in Bloomington. Reason being, there is potential for federal funding that the city could be getting that we may not have gotten because of that data or lack of that data. Two, in coordinating with Hennepin County Office to End Homelessness, as well as their community development, uh, department. Uh, there are things that we could be doing looking forward, around things that are already in the work plan for like planning or community development. What does that look like in our community to help serve our residents, all of our residents? Uh, what, what things can we do, um, but also what developments can happen? And what resources are needed? And when I say resources, I mean more so in terms of people, uh, terms of wraparound services, uh, terms of who's already here, Oasis, Veep, they're already here, they're doing the work. How can we coordinate and, and bring that better together? Um, in terms of Bloomington Public Schools, that would be right there, a part of that. There is, I come from Minneapolis, um, previously, and so, there are two things that I did end up working on. Stable Homes, Stable Schools, which was a program with MPHA, City of Minneapolis, Hennepin County, as well as others, around how to stably house children in the school district and their families. Uh, that is something that's being explored, talking with Richfield as they have something along those lines, talking with public health as they are, you know, it's all interconnected. Uh, as well as, um, really just looking at, honestly, capacity of, of the HRA. Even with, um, Hennepin County this being in their wheelhouse, there may be a need to have a better coordination of somebody that is more well-versed, uh, in what it takes for, to help with people experiencing homelessness and connecting those resources at the higher government and public and nonprofit entity level. So, all of those things are going on, but the biggest one is that data collection and maintaining communication with all of our service providers that are operating in Bloomington. Like I said, Oasis, Veep, uh, as well as those that have come in that are versed in it, but then Hennepin County in particular, and just looking at their coordinated, um, continuum, continuum of care plan, uh, that they have, which is something required by HUD when you are addressing homelessness. How do we become a part of that? Wilder does a study around, uh, people experiencing homelessness every three years, and they actually are going to be completing another one starting this year. Bloomington's going to be a part of that study to help provide information. So, all of those things are in the works.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is just a follow-up to that. You, you mentioned the work at Hennepin County, the Hennepin County level. Bloomington, we, we can't be unique in this issue, on this problem. Uh, and, and without expecting you to know details, specifics about other cities in Hennepin County, can, can you talk a little bit about how widespread this is, whether it's in Hennepin County or across the metro area or across the state of Minnesota?
Thank you, Mayor Bussie. It is across the country. Um, there actually was a newspaper article that Carla Henderson, CD Director, showed me about the impacts across the country. Bloomington is by no means unique. Just want to be perfectly clear. Bloomington, not unique at all in Hennepin County, in the state of Minnesota, in the country. This is impacting, um, most large cities, and Bloomington is a large city, as well as smaller cities. And so, a part of that is coordinating with, I keep saying Hennepin County, but I have also reached out to Minneapolis just because they're in Hennepin County. We're the second-largest city. They're the first. Think we should just know a little bit of information, um, to just find out how they bump their head, and then we can just improve upon it. So, um, I have reached out to Minneapolis. It is, it's not unique by any means. And it's probably, it's worse in other places, um, than it is in Bloomington. However, Bloomington has 9,000 hotel rooms, and so, it looks different here. We have more hotel rooms at last count than Minneapolis and St. Paul combined. And so, it looks different, and we don't have any shelters.
Council additional questions, comments? Councilmember Nelson and Beloga, if I miss you, speak up. So, I, you know, I'm dealing with three different screens here, so if I miss you, please don't, uh, don't be shy. All right, hearing nothing else, thank you so very much. I know we will see you again on tonight's agenda very shortly, so thank you so much for this.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item six on our agenda is our consent business. Councilmember Nelson, you have the consent calendar tonight. It is all yours.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, from the information I got from the city manager, I didn't hear about any holds. Um, does anybody have any holds, uh, before I make a motion?
Actually, Councilmember, if I could pull out, uh, item 6.2.
Sure, first, Mayor.
All right.
All right, so with that, I will move for approval of item 6.1, uh, items 6.3 through 6.7.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Nelson, a second by Councilmember Carter to adopt the consent business as stated. Hearing no further, council discussion. Ms. Eicheldinger?
Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. And actually, I wanted to hold item 6.2 because, uh, because of Brianna Eichendale, Eicheldinger, who, uh, just called the, the role of the council there. Uh, we actually have a, a temporary appointment with our council secretary because our previous council secretary, uh, Denise Christensen, has moved on in the organization. She's still with the city of Bloomington, but is no longer the council secretary. And so, until we get a permanent council secretary, we're going to have a couple of pinch hitters, uh, including Brianna. So, I just wanted to introduce Brianna to everybody, and, uh, thank you for pinch hitting and, and stepping in and when we need you most, so we greatly appreciate it. So, thank you much. And with that, I'd move, uh, item 6.2 of the consent business.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve item 6.2 of the consent business. Hearing no further, council discussion. Ms. Eicheldinger?
Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. And again, welcome. Thank you for your help tonight. We'll move on to item seven on our agenda, our hearings, resolutions, and our ordinances. And we will start with a resolution, and we're going to have a presentation regarding our Just Deeds Coalition. And, uh, we've got two folks, uh, with us, uh, but first, um, we're, we're going to get a bit of an introduction here with, uh, I'm blanking completely, and I apologize.
That's all right.
It must be the cold medicine. I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. It's nice to see everyone in person. Uh, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Melissa Wurst-Persad.
Yes, it is. Thank you very much for that. Thanks.
Staff liaison for the Human Rights Commission. And joining me this evening are Derringer Funches, a Human Rights Commissioner, as well as Paige Roman, who serves as Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. And we are here tonight to provide details on a joint recommendation of these two commissions' work around racial equity, specifically as it relates to property deeds, including a resolution for the city of Bloomington to join the Just Deeds Coalition. Next slide. So, the Human Rights Commission and Planning Commissions met in a joint session in early May, and we were joined by the City of Golden Valley City Attorney and Racial Equity Manager. The City of Golden Valley is a founding member of the Just Deeds Coalition. And so, I wanted to share a few key takeaways from that meeting. Um, they were, first of all, the importance of educating our community about the historical context of racist practices perpetuated by developers, real estate agents, lenders, lawyers, and local, state, and federal governments to establish segregated housing and keep wealth and opportunity from accumulating in communities of color. This education also includes helping people understand who has directly and indirectly benefited from historically racist practices, and how those practices have shaped access to property, homeownership, and wealth over time. It is important also to provide a resource for community members who want to know what assistance is available to help navigate the legal process in discharging these covenants. And at the close of the meeting, the commissions jointly adopted recommendations, which are aimed at taking action to dismantle racist systems that perpetuate inequality and devoting resources to create equity for communities of color. Those recommendations are included in the resolution, which is before you this evening, and our presenters will go over them towards the end of this presentation. In addition, we have had a subcommittee formed of three Human Rights Commission and two Planning Commissioners, and they will be continuing to work on these efforts. So, at this time, it's now my pleasure to turn the presentation over to Commissioners Funches and Roman.
Thank you, Melissa. My apologies. Had a complete brainlock. My apologies. Good evening, Mr. Funches. Good evening, Mr. Roman. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, all. Throughout the 1920s and the '30s and the '40s, restrictive covenants played a major role in dictating municipal demographics. By the end of the '20s, a ring of deed restrictions meant people of color had few options. So, what are discriminatory covenants? Discriminatory covenants refer to a contractual agreement that prohibit the purchase, lease, or occupation of a piece of property by a particular group of people. An example of that is the Norman Ridge subdivision. Within their, the provision, or the covenant they have, it says, "Occupation and ownership of dwellings, dwellings shall be by members of the Caucasian race only, except that this covenant shall not prevent occupancy by persons of other races, domestic services..." not prevent occupancy by persons of other races, domestic services, in domestic service upon such premises. There have been historical milestones that have taken place. In the 1940s, the NAACP launches a sustained legal campaign against the covenants. 1948, the Supreme Court rules, covenants are unenforceable. 1953, Minnesota prohibits racial restrictions in real estate documents. 1968, the Fair Housing Act makes racially restrictive, makes racially restrictive covenants illegal. And in 2019, Minnesota allows property owners to reject the covenants. Within their impacts of the covenants, they affect demographic, economic, health, infrastructure, wealth accumulation. Additionally, these covenants hampered the individual freedoms, the individual freedoms of the signer and future property owners to sell to whomever they chose. A consequence of that is an owner who violated the restrictions could have been sued and held financially responsible. Thus, these restrictions were very rarely contested by the owner. Based upon the covenants, there are linkage to modern-day zoning. Many of the zoning provisions were fundamentally exclusive and remain in place today. Minimum lot sizes, minimum unit sizes, lot with requirements, and restriction on the number of lots, number of units on a lot. On the next slide speaks of the Bloomington story. As you can see, we have the median household income, and it goes from white alone, not Hispanic, on down to black, and what their income is as a household, and the percentages of those who are homeowners. Next slide. In Bloomington, there are 374 covenants that intersect with 500 parcels, 18 are city-owned, and one HRA-owned. Next slide. This is an example of Bryant Park area. You see the city-owned lots and the HRA-owned lot.
One of the questions that came up, at least for me and for others, is, we saw earlier in the history that these covenants are no longer enforceable, and they're outright illegal, so why focus on them today? Well, these segregation patterns persist. Depressed homeownership has intergenerational consequences. The Twin Cities metropolitan area has one of the lowest African-American homeownership rates in the country. The lack of these covenants not being enforced has not altered that trajectory. Today, the average white household in the United States has 10 times as much wealth as the average black household. And again, it's that longitudinal arc that does not, has not changed. These covenants provide tangible examples of structural racism. We cannot change our future until we understand our past. And for me, I think one of the things is that some of our residents have been asking us to do this. I have received messages unsolicited, as a member of the Planning Commission, from people in the community, asking us if we were going to tackle this. Not surprisingly, our staff were already on it, so many thanks to them. Also, you know, one of the questions was, if it's not enforceable, why tackle this? Well, as we know, court rulings change, and also, it's just the right thing to do. Next slide, please. So, the recommended resolution that you're asked to consider has four key points. As a city, be on the record against these covenants. Deal with those that are on city-owned property. Actively work to reach impacted landowners. We envision this being more of a direct contact versus kind of a passive announcement on a website or in a publication. If we want to see results, then we need to put in some effort. And work on this issue specifically with the Just Deeds Coalition, but also work to actively take a critical look at our policies, codes, and other practices, to uncover and address those which are causing a disparate impact, be they intentional or unintentional. As I mentioned, the staff have done great work on, in the area of equity inclusion. I know we've reviewed some of our codes in the planning area, but this is another step to kind of dig a little deeper. Next slide, please. The subcommittee that staff mentioned is one step in a longer process with many things to do. The joint subcommittee is planning to work with staff to advance the education and awareness efforts. As you see here, some of those could be informal things, at events like the farmer's market, Summer Fete, probably next year at this point, Heritage Days and such, but we've also talked about informal events like open houses or coffee hours, that people can come and engage in this topic at whatever level they feel comfortable with. We're also recommending an active discharge effort, including the outreach to the property owners, promoting the Just Deeds option, and working with legal to tackle this issue on city-owned properties as well. As I said, if this is important to us, and our commissions do believe that it is, we need to put the little extra time and energy into reaching the property owners. Next slide, please. The Just Deeds Initiative, we're fortunate to have access to this initiative. It's a great resource for our community and to help individuals navigate this process. It's also helpful that the county has decided to waive all fees related to this work. You'll see here that there are several cities already on board, and we think Bloomington would be a great addition to the list, and alphabetically, we'd come first. Unlocking this resource for the city and our property owners is a great first step. Next slide, please. And so, this brings us to the discussion, and we're happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you for the presentation, appreciate it. Council questions, comments? Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick one, and maybe this is a question for staff, but, you know, knowing that there are 18 city-owned parcels and one HRA-owned parcel with a restrictive covenant, I guess my question is, to the best of your knowledge, how quickly can we get these things discharged? I mean, if these are city properties, you know, I mean, probably can't do it tonight, but, you know, how quickly could that happen?
Mr. Markergard?
Good evening, Mayor Wursty, Councilmember Coulter.
Good to see you again, in person.
Good to see you. Yeah, we are definitely working on that. We're talking with legal, and they are looking at, you know, ways to do that, and I would invite Ms. Manderscheid, if she has a time estimate on that, but I don't think it's a long period of time.
If you have a time estimate, that's fine. You don't, I was couching it a little bit when I said probably can't do it tonight, so...
Ms. Manderscheid, how long typically would this take?
Sure. Good night, Mayors, good night, or, excuse me, good evening, excuse me. Good evening, Mayor and Members. The action is, we need to think about it in a couple of different buckets. We have properties that are owned by the city, and it's our understanding that we will be able to bring one action to resolve those particular properties. We also have properties that are owned by the HRA. They'll need to bring a separate action for those. We understand that we'll be able to bring a joint action, and it'll take probably about a week to pull that together. We have to do a lot of title research, we think. Then there is the individual private properties, privately-owned properties, and individual homeowners will need to take action themselves to explore sort of the next steps on that. As attorneys in our community become more experienced, it doesn't take very long, an hour or a few per property, absent some sort of complicated title. So, as to the point about, you know, the fees being waived and access to the research databases that are needed to do this work, that's all up and running, and so all of those preliminary steps have been done. So, once sort of the wheels get put into motion, it should be fairly quick. In talking with Glenn in planning, we have identified that there are numerous other publicly-owned properties that are not owned by the city, and so we're going to be doing some brainstorming as to how to reach out to those other government entities to make them aware of those parcels located in the city of Bloomington.
Councilmember Coulter, is that doing it for you?
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Nelson, and then Councilmember Baloga. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the work of everybody on this, and look forward to these getting discharged and us helping people do that. The only comment I wanted to make is, you know, I've read about this issue, and just looked up an article I had read not too long ago on the Wall Street Journal, and, you know, Minnesota isn't just bad, we are the worst in the country in terms of disparities. And if you look at the metro area here from this article, they said 25% of black residents owned houses, and if I recall from the slide, a couple slides ago, it was maybe 14% or something like that in Bloomington. So, not only is the Minneapolis metro area worst in the nation, Bloomington is lagging behind the rest of the metro area in terms of black homeownership. This Wall Street Journal article, the first thing they identified as problematic are these types of covenants, and the lasting impact that they had on homeownership, where people owned homes, the value of those homes, the value of wealth creation, all of those types of things over, you know, multiple generations here. And the reason I raise all that is, it still, in my mind, raises the critical importance of providing owner-occupied opportunities within our community. We're doing a lot with rental, we're providing those things, there's a ton of barriers, they're not all controlled by the city, I get that, but in my mind, given where Bloomington is, given its relative performance on these issues, that is one of, I think for me, one of my top priorities is continuing to figure out how we can solve that puzzle and provide opportunities for people to own their own home, build that generational wealth, build their family, build a stable community, do all of those great things that we know come from homeownership. So, thank you for this, thank you for the work that is going into this project. I fully support it, and I would look forward to getting these things cleared off of there, and look forward to continue to provide better opportunities for everyone in our community.
Councilmember Baloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, a good part of what I was going to say has now been said by Councilmember Nelson, and principally around homeownership, which with the number of hotels that were built, or, excuse me, the number of rental apartment buildings that we're building, is decreasing our percentage of residents in our city who have the opportunity for homeownership. So, it's one of our priorities, and we need to keep it out front of us, so just want to reinforce that. More to the nuts and bolts of the plan, which I think is a good plan, and I think all of us have been getting contacted by residents with what to do on this, and I've been forwarding them to Melissa Manderscheid and the Legal Department. Are you the correct person, or who should we do that to? And with the active outreach that's being recommended, would that also be done either by legal, planning, or outreach engagement, or some combination of all of those entities? So...
Mayor, I'm happy to take that one.
Ms. Manderscheid?
Thank you. So, thank you, yes, Councilmember Baloga, I appreciate the outreach, and I have spoken with homeowners, so thank you for reaching out and providing my information. I'm very excited to let the council know that I've been reaching, I've been working with the Just Deeds Coalition lead staff person, inasmuch as she is, she's the city attorney for Golden Valley as well, and she has been working countless hours on this project, and put me in touch with a law firm in the city of Bloomington, and I met with them last week, and it seems like at least some of their attorneys will be available to help our private homeowners on their individual properties. It's also been, I've also become aware of the sort of experience of other cities, in that attorneys that live in these other Just Deeds cities have come forward and offered their services. The Just Deeds Coalition has put together a booklet, a how-to guide, so to speak, for attorneys, as well as local governments, to help us be efficient and quick, and do as much good as we can, as quickly as we can. So, there is a process set up. I've also been working with our communications department, related to our website, to set up a portal, so that our homeowners that are interested in getting in sort of the pipeline, we can be tracking that and getting their contact information. So, we will be getting that information out through one weekly and through social media to make folks in the community aware of that. And just as a reminder, in case it's not clear, it's our understanding that these services will be available for free to private homeowners who are interested in working through that. So, it's volunteer attorney time, and like the presenters mentioned, you know, many of the costs have been waived. I'm not sure if there's zero costs, but I'd be happy to track that down. Certainly minimal.
Thank you for that response, Mr. Mayor. Follow-up?
Councilmember Baloga?
Thank you. So, for clarification and reinforcement, our city staff will not be providing the legal support. It'll be done by referral to other volunteer lawyer groups and individuals within the city. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, Mayor Members, that is correct. Our, we don't have the internal staff resources to provide the services to the number of property owners that we have, but we are working as a conduit to locate law firms and lawyers that are able to help our private property owners, as well as acting as sort of a collection point to make sure that everyone who's interested gets in the pipeline to get sort of the access that they seek.
Perfect, good. And then, I imagine we're going to parcel out the communication on this, so that we don't overwhelm those resources. You know, there's roughly 600 properties in that neighborhood, and if we do that, we want to have a steady stream, I'd imagine, so that folks don't get discouraged and resign their position as a volunteer for this.
Well, yes. I will say, though, Mayor Members, that we, for a very long time, had four law schools in the city, or in the state of Minnesota, so there are plenty of lawyers that are available to help out, and I know that there are lots of lawyers in Bloomington, and this is a great way to get your pro bono volunteer hours, which lawyers are quite frankly called to do. We have an ethical obligation as lawyers to help, and we all contribute in a variety of different ways, beyond what we do on our daily work, to the greater good and to our greater ethical obligations to the law and to justice. So, all lawyers should be called to participate and help out in the ways that they see fit, and this is one great way that they can do that.
Thank you very much, much appreciated.
Council, any other comments? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few quick comments. I wanted to let folks get their questions out of the way. Just, really, just thank you for bringing this forward, and thank you for doing the work, you know. Paige, you mentioned, and I think it was mentioned in the Planning Commission as well, that this is, at the risk of sort of employing a potentially problematic metaphor, this is a textbook example of systemic racism. And, you know, these covenants were legal in the state of Minnesota until, I think it was 1962, and they were legal under federal law until 1968, which was the year my dad graduated from one of our many law schools in the state of Minnesota. I mean, this is not, this is recent history. And, you know, to sort of return to a point that I made earlier, this shows how decisions were made by folks, by city councils, and I'm glad you, you know, you brought up your point, and I'm glad that the work is going to continue from here, examining zoning and the other policies that we put in place to address systemic racism, because the reality is that decisions have been made by folks that put in place policies that resulted in outcomes that were racist, and we need to own that fact and move forward on addressing... on addressing it. And, you know, the the thing about systemic racism is that it's so insidious in that it's not always intentional, but but it it has these sort of tentacles almost that just reach out into so many different ways. And, you know, Councilmember Nelson mentioned this too, that that, you know, home is, it's it's more than just a place to hang your hat, to the extent that, you know, people wear hats anymore. It's, it's, it's an investment. It it results in that that wealth generation and and creation and allows folks to inherit wealth and build a better life, build a better life for themselves and for their their families. And the reality is that this was just a piece of denying a lot of folks who live right here in Bloomington that opportunity. And home is a place to put down roots and 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 build a life for yourself. And and a lot of folks were denied that opportunity because of decisions like this. And, you know, I think it really, really, it's really, really important for us to move forward and and acknowledge that and and take action to address that. So, thank you, Mayor. And Mayor, if there are no other comments from folks, I am ready, if not eager, to make a motion.
Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt a resolution authorizing and directing staff, the Human Rights Commission, and the Planning Commission to work with the Just Deeds Coalition on community education about racially restrictive covenants, along with the discharge of such covenants.
Second.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Coulter, a second by Councilmember Martin, to authorize and direct staff and the Human Rights Commission and the Planning Commission to work with Just Deeds Coalition. Any further discussion? And I will say, of the myriad reasons to do this, to see that actual language, what it actually says, and to consider that that's part of a legal document in the state of Minnesota and the city of Bloomington is appalling. Absolutely appalling. And and I agree, Councilmember Coulter. I think the sooner we can get those off of anything related to the city of Bloomington, the better. So, anything else, Council? If not, Ms. Eicheldinger.
Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman. Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Commissioners, thank you so very much. Mr. Funch, it's nice to meet you in person, finally.
Yes, indeed. Yes, indeed. Thank you.
Congratulations on the award, which is the first time we were introduced to you and and your appointment. We're very proud to have you on board. So thank you so very much and.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
And Mr. Roman, thanks for your continued work on the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you much.
Have a good evening.
Thanks. You too. Item 7.2 is our first public hearing of the evening. And this is an ordinance amending Chapter 11 of the City Code and Fee Schedule Appendix. And I believe Ms. Economy Scholder is going to lead us on this yet, or people are looking at me like I'm saying that wrong.
No, don't.
Standing by here just a moment. Well, officially, item 7.2 is an opportunity to 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 consider an ordinance to clean up the city code, to remove the actual dollar amounts from the separate city code section, move them to a standalone fee schedule that we've adopted. It was adopted a while ago, actually, last November, November of 2020, Appendix A. And Mr. Fabrucci?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, CFO, I know, is in the building. I think she probably got cut off card with the pace of that last item. So you're correct. This is an ongoing effort that we have regarding our fee schedule and getting the code cleaned up. So it's easier to understand where where fees are posted and that we don't have to come back and make multiple amendments periodically. And it just makes it much easier to administer and it's much more transparent.
And again, to be clear, this was the fee schedule that we did adopt last November. So this isn't adopting the fee schedule itself. This is simply incorporating that fee schedule officially into the language of the of our of our code. So.
Mayor members, this is actually a part of a larger process that we've been migrating the fees out of the codified text of the code and into a fee schedule so that they're in an appendix to our city code. They're still codified, but they're in an appendix. It's not only efficient, but to the city manager's point, it's more easy to find, more easy to regularly update and revise and review for, you know, accuracy and and all the other reasons that we review fees. So we are marching through the code and we're on Chapter 11. Maureen O'Brien in our in our office has been working with Chris Graves, our paralegal and the folks in finance to migrate all of those fees over to schedules. And you will continue to see them on your agendas and as you have been for the past few months. We have a plan to get through it all, but some of the chapters are quite dense with regard to how many they have, and it takes a lot of time. But there is no changing of the dollar amounts. It's simply migrating it over to the fee schedule. So there's an ordinance which removes them and takes them out and puts them into the into the fee schedule. And then there's a summary publication, because as you can imagine, there's lots and lots of charts.
Very good. Council, any questions on that? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a a quick one, just to to clarify for the public. By doing this, any changes that would happen to the fee schedule would still require an ordinance and a public hearing and all of that, correct? This is, this does not change that process. It's just changes where it's it's located in in the language of our city code.
Ms. Manderscheid.
Yep. Absolutely. Mayor members, we have fees that are adopted by resolution and fees that are adopted by ordinance. So we have more than one fee schedule, you know, based on what the law requires and how we adopt them. But they all are being migrated to those documents. And yes, absolutely, we have public hearings as required by law in our practice prior to any changes on them. So most certainly. And we typically do that on a sort of a regularized schedule during the year so that we have a practice of regularly reviewing them. They're much easier to review when they're all in one document as opposed to scattered throughout hundreds and hundreds of pages.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, Council? Hearing no further questions. This is a public hearing. And I'd like to open the public hearing right now on item 7.2, which is an ordinance amending Chapter 11 of the City Code and Fee Schedule Appendix. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item? Item 7.2. Anyone? Ms. Wilson, is there anyone online or on the phone who would like to speak to item 7.2?
Honored, this is Chris. Do we have any callers on the line for agenda item 7.2?
We don't have participants over the phone. Please continue.
Thank you.
Not, no one coming forward. Last call. If not, Council, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Loman, a second by Councilmember Martin to close the public hearing on item 7.2. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Eicheldinger.
Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson. Aye.
I see a thumbs up. I think we have a connection issues there, but I saw a thumbs up. That is an aye.
Thank you. Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero to close the public hearing on item 7.2. Council, any additional questions or comments on this one? If not, I'd look for action.
Mayor, be happy to.
Councilmember Loman.
Be happy to move to adopt a a motion to amend Chapter 11 of the City Code and Fee Schedule Appendix and to adopt a resolution directing summary publication. I better do that separately.
Why don't we do that separately if we could? So we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Loman, a second by Councilmember Martin to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 11 of the City Code and the Fee Schedule Appendix. Hearing no further counsel discussion. Ms. Eicheldinger.
Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Loman.
Mayor, I'll move a resolution directing summary publication of the ordinance, number 2021, and an ordinance amending Chapter 11 of the City Code and Fee Schedule Appendix.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Loman, a second by Councilmember Martin for summary publication. Hearing no further counsel discussion. Ms. Eicheldinger.
Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Well, thank you much for that. We look forward to additional changes and cleanup of the of the code as we move forward here. So thank you much. On to item 7.3, our second public hearing of the evening. This is a new on-sale intoxicating liquor license application for B&amp;B Theaters at the Mall of America. Mr. Junker, good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Yes, the theaters at the Mall of America are under new management, B&amp;B Theaters. I believe they are up and running and they're just waiting for our approval for the liquor license.
So this is the, these are new owners, correct? And no, no issues with their application?
No, no, everything was crystal clear on this. Yeah, new new ownership. The mall found a found a new entity to manage the theaters up on the fourth floor.
Very good. Council, any questions on this? No counsel questions. I will open the public hearing on item 7.3, public hearing on the new on-sale intoxicating liquor license application for B&amp;B Theaters at the Mall of America 13. Would anyone like to speak to item 7.3 on tonight's agenda?
Hi, Barb Schneider again.
Good evening again.
Good evening. I'm speaking off the top of my head. I didn't realize this was coming up. I am concerned about the fact that MOA is kind of a magnet for people who want to make trouble. And people who want to make trouble combined with liquor is a problem. That's been demonstrated. I don't think I have to say anything more about that. I am concerned about that. The Attorney General, Allison, was on the news yesterday talking about anticipated unrest this summer, further unrest, whether indoors, outdoors, it doesn't matter, but combined with entertainment venues. I see this as a potential problem. And I think that there should be some very serious discussion about how this could go bad, create more problems. Law enforcement has enough trouble. And although MOA has its own law enforcement station over there and their own law enforcement people, and we do a wonderful job, I think that introducing this element is unnecessary at this particular time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schneider. Mr. Junker, if you could, I believe that the previous owner of the theaters there also had a liquor license and did serve liquor, did they not?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. Yes, the previous owner had a liquor license. We've had a liquor license there for many years and probably about two or three different entities in that in that theater with the with the liquor license.
And do do we recall any additional problems associated with the liquor license at the the theaters at the Mall of America?
No, actually, the theater, the theater itself is probably one of the easiest ones because it is a ticketed operation. And originally, we only had it in two of the theaters. And I think it was the last operator was the one that actually added in this restaurant component and and bar component. And it, it went very well, again, because it is kind of a ticketed and captive audience, if you will. So it's actually been pretty good up there. I don't think we, we didn't have any violations in the compliance checks. And I don't recall any other police reports liquor-related up there either.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this? Ms. Wilson, do we have anyone on the phone?
Honored, do we have any callers for agenda item 7.3?
We don't have participants over the phone. Please continue.
Thank you.
We have no one on the phone wishing to speak. Is there anyone in person here who wishes to be to speak on this, item 7.3? If not, Council, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I'll second.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Beloga, a second by Councilmember Loman to close the public hearing on item 7.3. Hearing no further counsel discussion. Ms. Eicheldinger.
Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Council, any discussion on this? If not, I would look for motion or I'd look for action on this.
Mr. Mayor, I'm willing to offer a motion.
Councilmember Beloga.
Move to approve the on-sale intoxicating liquor license for B&amp;B Theaters Operating Company, Inc., doing business as B&amp;B Theaters, Mall of America 13.
Second.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Beloga, a second by Councilmember Loman to approve the on-sale intoxicating liquor license for B&amp;B Theaters' operation, doing business as B&amp;B Theaters, Mall of America 13. No further counsel discussion. Ms. Eicheldinger.
Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. On to item 7.4, which is our last public hearing of the evening. And it's our second new on-sale intoxicating liquor license application. This for the Embassy Suites Bloomington. Mr. Junker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council. Embassy Suites is again under new management ownership. And this one, I'm asking for your approval pending some outstanding items. We are, staff has been in contact with the applicant, and we do expect those items very, very soon. So we're both the applicant and staff are shooting for getting that license to them by July 1st. We do have a couple of things we're waiting on. So please approve this pending the outstanding items.
Pending the outstanding items, and you're you're confident that if we put it pending in effective July 1st, it will, we'll be able to manage that?
That's where I mean, it's in their best interest to get those items to us. We're waiting on them right this point. And they, they were confident they were going to get them to us. I was really, really hoping we'd have them today. But but I still need to ask you for that that pending item issue. But yeah, we're, we're, as soon as they get them to us, I'm sending it right up to the state and we're hoping to get them green lighted and into the system. So.
All right. Council, questions on this? Councilmember Loman?
We've done this in the past, right? Where we've pended over.
Councilmember, Mr. Junker, I believe this is not uncommon that we do this type of thing, waiting for pending items to come through.
Yeah, usually, usually this is during renewal time, as you recall, because we have to do this so early, get things to the state. Usually there's insurance items and things I'm chasing. Usually we, when it's a new license like this, we want to, we want to make sure we have that package all buttoned up. But with the the July 1st, the license running out, it's a July 1st date coming up. I really wanted to get it on tonight's council meeting. And again, that that fire is under the applicant to get those those items to me. So I'm just trying to work with them. And hopefully, when I walk in the office tomorrow, I'll have that all squared away and we can get this taken care of. So we're just trying to help them out and not wait another cycle to get to another council meeting. So.
Understood. Mr. Fabrucci?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Doug, maybe it's best just for the record to identify what items are pending so that we do have that on the record. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, no, no problem, Mayor and City Manager. The 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 items on this one, because this this hotel actually went through a a transfer due to some financial issues. So the new owner is is responsible to to pay us for some of the back liquor lodging tax. So we're waiting on that that first payment. And then we're also have a payment plan set up with them. So they didn't have to have to count that lump sum from the get-go. So due to COVID and everything else, last year, this this hotel kind of started to go the wrong way. But this company has taken it over and through the courts and has been approved to to do so. And again, everything is checked out. Everything's great. Finances look great. They had to take on this burden. So we've been working through that with them. And they've agreed to it. We just haven't gotten that first payment yet. So we're waiting for that.
So we have clarification of the items that are pending submission. Counsel, any additional question? Additional question, Mr. Fabrucci?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, if counsel is amenable after conducting the public hearing when making a motion to approve, would just suggest an amendment to the motion before you that just identifies there are pending items as stated by the city staff.
Counsel, any additional questions, comments on this? Seeing none. This is a public hearing, and I'll open item 7.4, the public hearing on a new on-sale intoxicating liquor license application. This for the Embassy Suites in Bloomington. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on item 7.4? Anyone like to speak? Ms. Wilson, do we have anyone on the line to speak to item 7.4?
Hello, Honored, do we have any callers for agenda item 7.4?
We don't have participants. I'm sorry, we don't have participants. We don't have participants. I'm sorry, we don't have participants over the phone. You may continue.
Thank you.
Very good. No one on the phone, no one coming forward. Counsel, I'd look for a motion to close tonight's public hearing.
So moved. Beloga.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beloga, second by Councilmember Loman to close the public hearing on item seven point four. There are no further counsel discussion. Ms. Eichlinger.
Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carried seven zero. The public hearing closed on item seven point four. Counsel, I'd look for action on item seven point four. Councilmember Loman.
All right, thank you. I'll move, uh, to approve the on sale intoxicating liquor license for SSH Bloomington LLC, doing business as Embassy Suites Bloomington, pending any outstanding items identified earlier, uh, by staff.
Second, Beloga.
We have a motion by Councilmember Loman, a second by Councilmember Beloga to approve the on sale intoxicating liquor license pending the submission of the outstanding items as described. Hearing no further counsel discussion. Ms. Eichlinger.
Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Ms. Wilson, I believe that's the public portion of tonight's meeting and I think we can let our operator go.
Thank you. Vanna, that's all the public call-in we would have for tonight. So, thank you for your assistance. You can go ahead and disconnect the line.
Thank you, speakers.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help this evening. Move on to item eight on our agenda, our organizational business. And actually, this is a, a good example of when we combined our meetings and kind of eliminated the, the notion of a study session. Uh, the next three or four items are actually basically would be a study session. And so, that's what we're trying to, to do is balance out our meetings a little bit more with decision items and study items so we don't lump them all into one meeting and, um, and, and burn everybody out staying here until midnight talking about different things. So, it seems a little bit more efficient and it's been working, I think, so far. But, uh, you know, feedback would be appreciated, but I think it's been working. With that, I'd like to call item eight point one on our agenda, which is the Minnesota Home Ownership Mortgage Assistance and Down Payment Research Presentation. And Ms. Coleman from the HRA is going to join us once again for this presentation. Welcome back.
Thank you. So, I do have a guest, um, who is online, Brooke Walker with the Home Ownership Center. Should be online. Um, and she does have the first part of my, of the presentation tonight. But I do want to say that I'm excited to be here on National Home Ownership Month. I don't know if you knew, but June is National Home Ownership Month. So, um, we made it. It's June twenty eighth. Uh, but, um, just bringing forward some information around down payment assistance, disparities in, um, homeownership, as well as mortgage assistance, uh, foreclosures and forbearance. So, I do see Brooke is on and we will, um, get the presentation up. But I want to introduce Brooke Walker with the Minnesota Home Ownership Center. Brooke?
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers, opportunity to be here.
Good evening. Thanks for being with us.
Um, so, I am just going to take about ten minutes of your time and give you a high level overview of the Minnesota Home Ownership Center and then speak to the two issues mentioned by Ms. Coleman. Um, but before I begin, I do just want to call out Ms. Coleman. She has been a longtime partner of the Minnesota Home Ownership Center, bringing her industry experience, relationships and expertise to the table. And both as a staff member of the Minnesota Home Ownership Center and a resident of Bloomington, I was thrilled, we were all thrilled to hear that Ms. Coleman was going to be bringing those expertise to the city of Bloomington. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. Uh, so, the Minnesota Home Ownership Center is a nonprofit and we act as a statewide intermediary. And we promote and advance successful homeownership in Minnesota with an emphasis on those with the greatest barriers, including lower income households and communities of color. In this, we collaborate not only with, uh, I'm sorry, but you can, no, you're fine. You can, either one, we're there. Um, so, in this, we collaborate with our network of providers. Um, but we also work closely with industry stakeholders such as Minnesota Housing, Realtors Association, mortgage lenders and municipalities statewide. And in this, we are leading development of innovative solutions and promoting continuous investment in sustainable homeownership. Next slide, please. As an intermediary, we work with a statewide network of nearly forty public, private and nonprofit organizations, reaching just about twenty thousand households each year. This network provides assistance to first time, first generation home buyers, helping them improve their credit, budget profile, and increasing their knowledge of the home buying process, as well as helping them sustain homeownership. Thirty-year track record of proven, proven results, uh, since two thousand and eight, our network has helped more than one hundred thousand Minnesotan households benefit from homeownership advising and educational activities. In addition, the network has helped nearly thirty-nine thousand households successfully avoid mortgage foreclosure. And as you can see here, the majority of the households that we serve are at or below eighty percent AMI and many of which represent households of color. Next slide, please. Briefly, this slide just shows the impact on Bloomington residents during this last year. And similar to our statewide demographics, you can see that many of the households served do, um, represent the BIPOC community in our households that have low to very low income. I've also included on this slide, a handful of the organizations from our network that have helped support Bloomington residents. Next slide. So, this was touched on earlier. So, I, I won't belabor this information. Um, but the center is currently focused on the two opportunities mentioned in the title of this presentation, both down payment as well as mortgage assistance. But just in context, I think it's important to acknowledge the racial homeownership gap, which is a part of the work of the center. So, again, this was discussed, um, but this is just an opportunity for you to see it in concrete numbers. Um, in particular, black households in Minnesota have a homeownership rate of twenty-five percent. This is far below the national rate of forty-two percent. At a fifty percentage points, as it was mentioned earlier, our black-white racial homeownership gap is among the widest and in some, some metrics, the widest in the nation. And then, as you can see on this, uh, second chart here, looking more specifically at Hennepin and Ramsey County, um, the metropolitan, we are, um, the leading, the largest black-white homeownership gap in the metropolitan region in the nation. And as you can see, this gap has worsened since two thousand, reducing nearly by ten percent. And many of this, much of this is attributed to the Great Recession and the foreclosure crisis experienced, um, by our communities, which hit black households harder, um, than many other communities. Next slide, please. So, this brings us to, um, kind of one of the two topics. Um, the center and its network and partners are looking to increase homeownership for BIPOC communities. Um, what we know is lack of savings for down payment is among the most frequently cited challenges for first time home buyers. Looked at nationally, uh, the Minnesota Home Ownership Center and the Minnesota Realtors partnered to commission a study so that we could determine the potential impact of down payment assistance in Minnesota. And what we learned is that more than a hundred thousand Minnesota renter households could buy a home with a down payment assistance of less than eleven thousand dollars. The study estimates that between eleven thousand and thirty thousand black renters could purchase a median priced home with some level of down payment assistance. And transitioning just a little over eleven thousand black renter households to homeownership would increase the black homeownership rate by ten percent. Now, the down payment assistance is not a singular solution to addressing the very complex problem of the homeownership gap or creating access for those who, uh, face the greatest barriers. But for many renters, it is central to accessing homeownership. And as was, uh, mentioned earlier, um, this evening in the presentation, there has been a huge, uh, gap in wealth creation through intentional practices to prevent homeownership within the black community. And not having access to this wealth and this integration, intergenerational wealth prevents access for current generations moving into homeownership, not having the capital on hand to put a down payment down for homeownership. So, with that said, uh, the current delivery system for down payment is fragmented. There's many obstacles for, um, home buyers as well as industry professionals alike. And current, current levels of funding do not support increased access to homeownership in a meaningful way. So, to this end, the Minnesota Home Ownership Center is, uh, looking to improve and streamline the down payment delivery system as well as increased funding. We are convening a working group, um, to help give their guidance and expertise, which Ms. Coleman is participating on. And some of the objectives of the working group are to develop some best practices in the delivery of DPA statewide, improving access to information about down payment assistance, expanding the use of current funding streams often held by cities, as well as identifying new sources of capital to increase the availability of down payment assistance. Next slide, please. So, the second opportunity in focus is the prevention of another foreclosure crisis. And these two are, uh, very interrelated. Again, you saw the decrease in homeownership rates within the black community, much of that being attributed to the foreclosure crisis. And I think it's well-known, um, that many of the households who are at risk of losing their homes represent low income and BIPOC communities, um, as a result of this, um, economic crisis created by the pandemic. So, at a high level, it's currently estimated that eleven thousand Hennepin County homeowners are currently thirty dated, thirty days or more behind on their mortgage. And of those, nearly four thousand do not have a forbearance. Um, the COVID-related mortgage forbearance opportunities will begin expiring next month. Further, the Minnesota Home Ownership Center and network, um, is an established partner with a proven track record in this space. As I mentioned earlier, nearly thirty-nine households have avoided foreclosure since two thousand and eight due to their direct work with our network in participating in foreclosure counseling. Most recently, we partnered with Minnesota Housing to administer, um, CHAP for homeowners. And we currently are working with Minnesota Housing, um, in their development and implementation of Home Help Minnesota. There is not an official launch date for that, but it is anticipated fall of this year. And there is a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars available in assistance. And we anticipate foreclosure counseling to be a key part of that program. Further, in partnership with Hennepin County and the city of Minneapolis, we are administering, um, the Hennepin County Emergency Home Ownership Assistance Fund, which has approximately two point eight million dollars available. Um, and, um, residents of Bloomington, Eden Prairie and Plymouth will not be able to participate in that program as they receive their own CDBG allocation. That program is set to launch, um, in late August, early September. Both of these programs are expected to be in high demand and not fully meet the need within our communities. Um, we do believe that foreclosure counseling will be a, a key part of this and is something that we are working on with our network to ramp up so that we can meet the need of homeowners. Um, I think it sometimes is taken for granted that, um, people know what to do in these situations. I think there's been a lot more protections in place. We learned a lot during the foreclosure crisis. Um, but we cannot take for granted, um, that there, that there will not be some repeat of that due to the high numbers of people who are delinquent. Next slide, please. This last slide, um, I just share with you and leave with you, um, is a complete list of the network members who serve our state and provide this, um, these services, both from home buyer education through foreclosure counseling. And I just want to say thank you for your time. And I believe Ms. Coleman has some information to share, but I will gladly answer questions when appropriate.
Thank you, Brooke. Yes, I will continue and then, uh, I just have a few slides and then we can take questions, both Brooke and I. Uh, so, thank you. Next slide, please. So, I just wanted to provide Bloomington data. And so, this is technically outdated because it's twenty nineteen and twenty twenty is the year that it has been. So, we're still going to get that data. But as you can see from this, the median household income for a white, non-Hispanic family is seventy-nine thousand, forty-one dollars in twenty nineteen, according to the American Community Survey. Whereas for a black family, fifty thousand, six hundred, twenty-five dollars. To put that in, um, in terms of the AMI or area median income, a white, non-Hispanic family is about eighty percent AMI. A black family is fifty, less than sixty percent. Next slide. Homeownership in Bloomington. As you saw earlier, again, this is from twenty nineteen, American Community Survey, uh, seventy-four percent of white, non-Hispanic own their homes as compared to fourteen percent of black people in Bloomington in particular. Um, as you can see, even, uh, what would be classified as some other race, it could be native or, um, another race, is higher than black people in Bloomington. I do want to say that, as you have heard this evening, this is not just due to income. This has to do with, um, one, policies and practices such as restrictive covenants. But restrictive covenants were used, um, in deeds, restrictive deeds, restrictive covenants in deeds was used to develop new property. And in nineteen sixty-eight, when the Fair Housing Act passed, it made it illegal. It didn't stop it. So, that continued for many years after nineteen sixty-eight. And we still see remnants of it today, whether, um, people show up and they don't want certain people living in their neighborhood, or they, um, are not respectful of different cultures of neighbors or businesses. We still see it today, the impacts of not only racially restricted covenants, but also how the GI Bill was used, also how the Federal Housing Administration administered loans for homeownership, also how the homeowner loan corporation decided how to redline maps, also how proximity to blackness means that your property is lower, lower valued. That exists today in real estate. Next slide. This is, uh, foreclosures for Bloomington. So, in twenty nineteen, there is twenty-seven foreclosures. In twenty twenty, there were fourteen. It's twenty twenty-one and we are at ten foreclosures in Bloomington. I have to say, um, in the information that was provided by the Minnesota, Minnesota Home Ownership Center, or the center, um, they have already been able to fend off potential foreclosures in Bloomington within this last year, according to their data and their network of providers. And this has been without partnership with Bloomington as a city. Next slide. So, I wanted to touch on down payment assistance in terms of what is anybody else around us doing? Uh, so, I just thought to pull this chart together to show, uh, the different cities around us. And as you can see, it ranges from ten thousand to sixty thousand in Edina. They're kind of out there with the sixty thousand, but, um, they're having a hard time, uh, still using it to its full capacity. Um, but you can see in terms of the term, most of them are zero interest deferred, some are forgivable. And then you can see the income limits change between eighty percent and a hundred and twenty percent AMI. Um, some require you to be a first time home buyer, some do not. And then, one, Edina has a purchase price limit. But where I really wanted to focus was on the median home sales price of the properties. Bloomington's median home sales price is about two hundred and seventy-seven thousand as a whole. Uh, but in West Bloomington, it's three hundred and fifteen. And in East Bloomington, it's, um, about two hundred and eighty, two hundred and ninety, somewhere in there. Um, so, I just wanted to show you this, just to give you a snapshot, just what is anybody else around us doing? And especially as the Home Ownership Center has talked about, you know, kind of coordinating a little bit better across the metro about what you offer and how you offer it. Next slide. This is just homeownership program options. Uh, there has been discussion about homeownership opportunities and how to increase them. And so, within the city's purview, but also working together with partners in community, uh, down payment assistance, loans and or grants to cover affordability, usually capped on AMI to reach BIPOC buyers. Uh, not saying that black indigenous people of color are poor. However, due to, um, fair housing and other policies, the way to try and get to people that would need it the most, which have, as we've seen, been identified as black people at the very bottom of the charts, um, would be to cap the, the area median income to try and reach those lower income buyers. Therefore, trying to reach communities of color, but it's not synonymous, communities of color are not just poor. So just want to say that. A land trust. Land trust is purchasing the improvements, which is the house, and leasing the land. We do partner with WALT, so West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust. And there has been some questions and discussions about what could the city do in terms of its own land trust? That's something to embark upon that would require a long-term study and engagement with community to truly understand what we're trying to reach and accomplish with that. A right-to-return policy. This is when displacement has happened due to harmful practices or policies, usually by government. There are two examples of a right-to-return policy, one in Portland and one in Minneapolis. It's called the Community Preference Policy in Minneapolis. And so it's basically saying, if you were displaced due to this policy as dictated by the government, so by the local government entity, if there was a policy or practice that was put in place that caused people to be displaced, and it's usually people of color or lower income at greater numbers, then you are designing something that says, well, if we have a down payment assistance program or property for sale, you would have priority status to apply to be eligible for that. And then alternatives to credit. This one's actually really big. And I say that because when we talk about homeownership options and closing homeownership disparity gap, it's not just money, as Brooke mentioned earlier. It is credit. It is stability in the housing that you're in. It is education. It is wage gap. It is healthcare. It is so many different things that are playing together. The HUD secretary just identified student loans as one of the major issues for black, the lack of black homeownership, right? So it's multiple things. And so when you think about alternatives to credit, one would be culturally specific, non-interest, so not traditional mortgages that have interest. And then, two, the unbanked. There are many people that do not trust the banking system and are unbanked. And so how do you reach individuals like that? Alternatives to credit would be possibly a guarantee. Basically, as a city saying, here's our criteria and we will back this person so that they will, if they, basically like Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, they're secondary loan servicers. So you're basically coming in and saying, we're not going to let them go into foreclosure. We will step in and help with this. That would be the very simplest form of a guarantee. And so I just wanted to provide this information and then just open it up for discussion with Brooke and myself. We went through it kind of quick and it's a lot, but you seem pretty versatile. It's homeownership night, so.
Thank you. Council questions? Councilmember Loman.
Well, thank you. I know that Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember Beloga, I know, have also been very interested in trying to do this. And not to say that the rest of my colleagues haven't been interested at all either. I don't want to go beyond saying that. No, just reading about the credit piece, I was really happy you had mentioned that. It's one of the things that they brought forward at the Federal Reserve Bank, just talking about the access to credit that certain individuals in our, in our community are not able to access. And, you know, one of the things I've always liked that we've done here in Bloomington is around how we have our loan program, you know, in terms of, you know, trying to utilize that for repairing your house. But I always had wondered if there'd be any way to take part of those dollars or maybe some other pot and start looking at some of these down payment options or other things that we could use on these lists. And the question I have of the things that you have on this list, when we look at other cities that are doing this, how much does it cost to kind of do that? I know that when we have homeownership, that really does help from an economic standpoint. I know rental is great and it's great to have rental folks, but how do we, how do we move folks, you know, that are living in Bloomington and across the region from being rental folks within the city to being homeowners here? And how much does that cost? How much does it cost us as a city? And then, after we get done with the cost piece of it, what are the benefits that we get as taxpayers from that return? I know that when we do the home loan program, the benefit to the city is the increased value of the properties. So when we get ready to do this, I know it's, you know, one thing, it's, we kind of, kind of say that, you know, it'd be great to help folks, but how does it help the city? I mean, this is not just an investment that we're trying to do to be good stewards of people. How does this help the city economically when we do this, these types of programs? And what are the best options for Bloomington to kind of get us rolling with that?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Bussie, councilmember. So, one, it helps the city as people are putting roots down and staying. Now, mind you, there's nothing wrong with renting. Renting is the sign of a healthy real estate market. Nothing wrong with it by any means. However, when it comes to ownership and ownership housing, it helps the city by, one, the city's growing, two, the city's diversifying, three, we have a higher number of older population in Bloomington. And so providing for more options of life cycle housing for if they choose, if our older population chooses to move, there's something for them to move into to stay in the community. And then there's something for such as starter homes that might be a little bit less expensive than some of the newer properties. All of that is helping the city as any city or neighborhood is on a 25-year life cycle. So if we don't meet the needs of maintaining our city with the homeowner, with the stock of homes, homeownership, people putting roots, people giving back, shopping here, staying here, moving more people here, doing work here, then that actually ends up harming our city. So it's everything to go towards helping our city in terms of the income from the taxes as well as people staying, growing, thriving. In terms of how much it will cost the city, so I do not have that number off the top of my head. Right, probably didn't think I would. However, it is a program that I administered myself for another city. And when that program was administered, what we did was we actually used CDBG dollars as well as local dollars and used, paid a fee, an administrative fee for a third party, actually, to do the down payment assistance application and approval and loan. And so then it was zero interest deferred. And when the money, the money just came back when it was paid off. And so in the initial stages, it probably cost the city quite a bit. But in looking and reviewing how we have our funding at the city of Bloomington, whether it's CDBG or local dollars, like you said, looking at our rehab programs and looking at other sources, it may not be something that necessarily costs the city in terms of what our end goal is. And then the benefit to taxpayers, well, I can say, one, is just being a homeowner, just the tax break you get. We'll just say that right now, is one of the benefits that it would be to taxpayers. But also just, you know, just in the climate that we're in, and I don't mean the climate like Minnesota, I mean the country, being a homeowner and having the ability to take full access of the opportunity, you feel more involved. You feel more included. You feel like your voice matters. Not that your voice doesn't matter as a renter, but you may not feel the same or you may not feel like you're heard the same. And so to me, that would be a huge benefit for the taxpayers, not to mention schools, they start to do better, businesses, all kinds of things. It's just a major benefit for the taxpayers. I hope I answered your questions, at least at the high level.
Yeah, thank you. I know, specifics, that takes a little bit more down the line, but no, I appreciate that. Because I think that's, I think what folks, when they hear these disparities, what they want to hear, or at least what I want to hear as I'm out there, what's the benefit, you know, to, you know, the other taxpayers that are here in the city? You know, and definitely want to do something to try to be leaders in that, in the city, as we have with other things. But I think we've really got to focus in on what we're going to do around that so people understand what the answer is to that. And I think you've gone a long ways to answer that. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So this was really an exciting conversation. I just have a couple of questions. So for Ms. Walker, she had mentioned that in Hennepin County, in the last 30 days, there were 11,000 people who were at risk of foreclosure. I believe that was the data point. And I was just curious if you had that number for Bloomington specific, specifically.
We were not able to get that data at a city level. And it's, the most recent estimate of, is about 11,000 that are 30 days or more behind. So that data may be as easily 60, it's probably 60 days old at this point because you can only, can only capture it, you know, the following month. And the data's been difficult to get. And unfortunately, we don't have that at the city level.
Okay, thank you. I kind of assumed that, I assumed if you had it, you probably would have shared that. So I wanted to ask just in case. The second question I have is, I see it as directly related to the conversation around down payment assistance. So I don't, I mean, I think I'm kind of stating the obvious here that the market is super competitive right now. Houses have 10, 20 bids going in, cash offers. And part of the problem that I've been hearing about, and I heard about, I've heard about this for the last couple of years, that residents are concerned about this, that investors are coming in and buying houses, flipping them, selling them for prices that are no longer affordable for that first home, first-time homebuyer. And so I just, I'm curious, as we talk about these options and think about down payment assistance, you know, how do we prevent, can we, is there anything we can do to prevent that from happening and kind of decreasing the number of homes that are available for those first-time homebuyers that could use this down payment assistance?
Brooke, do you have anything before I try and answer that?
I would just point to the most recent report done by the Urban Institute that says, Who Owns the Twin Cities? And talks about the single-family SFR, maybe not specific to what you're saying in term of flipping and reselling, but also purchasing and renting. It's a very competitive rental market. So I would just encourage you, the council, to take a look at that report. And it does have some policy recommendations that can be done at a local level.
Great, that's, that's awesome. And so it's by the Urban Institute?
I will actually upload that report and the report that the Home Ownership Center cited in their presentation tonight. I will upload that to the agenda item. It's actually a really good read, but I'm also a housing nerd. But I will upload that so you will have it and you don't have to go looking for it. But it is by the Urban Institute. So in terms of, in terms of housing and the availability, I think there are things that can be done, but it requires further exploration. And the reason I'm pausing on this is because Minnesota has some of the strongest property rights in the country. And when you start to impede upon that as a city or as a government, which could be looked at as restricting the right to purchase or sell a property, it's going to take a little bit more research to look at that and what policies could be put in place. It's easier when it's tenant occupied, but when it is ownership, that's the market. But yes, it is a very big issue. It's not only investors, but it's international investors that are coming in to our cities and purchasing single-family homes in very large numbers with cash and controlling the market with that. So I can do some more research and get back to you on that, but that's going to require a little bit, a little bit more.
Thank you.
And thank you for that. That was going to be the question, actually my question, similar to Councilmember Carter's, that very item. And I think there was a lengthy article in the Strip this morning about that very topic.
There was.
And so would appreciate learning more about that and appreciate if you had the link to the actual study, as well as, the article mentioned policy, policy needs at local government levels or even state government levels, but they didn't say what those policies were. And I, I've been puzzling, trying to figure out what those policies might be to try and do that. So anything you could provide could be greatly, would be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. A lot of the questions I have have been addressed already, but just to understand the scale of this issue, I believe there was some information earlier from Ms. Walker about the 11,000 people that are more than 30 days behind. Do you have any trend information, how that compares to previous years and particularly pre-pandemic? I mean, how, how much has that increased recently?
So I can follow up and we can share that data. Off the top of my head, I think we're somewhere around 4.6% as a state. I think the high point was around five, low 5%. And I mean, what normal would be closer to 3%. So we still are at a significant spike in comparison to the, prior to the pandemic.
Right, thank you for the context. The other thing that was remaining on my list of questions is I understand that city of Bloomington is not eligible for the Hennepin County Emergency Assistance Program because we get our own CGBD funds and utilize them. And I know one of the conversations we've had, and I think Councilmember Beloga had brought it up a couple of times previously, is we used a lot of the federal funding that we got, I believe CARES Act dollars for rental assistance. And so I guess I'm concerned now, as we look at this and this increase in potential issues on this side and/or the down payment side, you know, is there any reason, I mean, I don't know if any of that funding is available still, or is there any reason to reallocate it? I know there were some conversations that if we needed to do something with foreclosure, that we would, there were maybe other funds available. Can anyone refresh my memory as to what our situation is with those dollars and what tools we might have to help those in our community that are facing this crisis?
Absolutely. I can, Councilmember Nelson. So, yes, we did use CARES dollars, CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, CV, coronavirus, dollars for rental assistance, which was a great help. We do still have some CDBG CV funding available. In previous discussions with city leadership, it would be partially for rent assistance as that continues. And then we can look at mortgage assistance with the remaining dollars. However, that does require an amendment to our CDBG comprehensive plan. It's not a difficult thing to do, but it just does require an amendment to make sure that we are highlighting the homeownership opportunities in our plan to have it approved by HUD.
Thank you for the clarification and just thank you for staying on top of this. I assume if you see a need for doing that, you'll bring back a recommendation based on what you're seeing. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Council, additional questions? Councilmember Martin.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And thank you so much for this information. You're right, this is Housing Night and all of it's pretty fascinating. I guess I'd be curious offline some other time to maybe talk about how we sequence some of these initiatives, some of these efforts like the down payment assistance leading into the right-to-return and how all those feed into each other. I guess, kind of in the broader context, obviously, our housing market is dependent on an entire region and what's going on with supply generation everywhere. So I guess how much can a single city like Bloomington, we've had proposals come before us for some of the first owner-occupied development in a while with prices above a half million dollars per unit? So while down payment assistance is obviously critical, if we're not solving the supply issue and just keeps getting further and further out of reach, is that targeted rezoning, maybe around our commercial areas to provide more flexibility for developers? Is that lobbying at the state level to remove regulatory burdens there that's preventing things like condo development? How much of this can Bloomington kind of tackle and how much are we just along for the ride in a massive housing shortage?
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. All of the above, just to be clear. Bloomington actually can participate in all of the above. So yes, it is lobbying at the state Capitol for the restrictions to be, the burdens to be lifted around condo development. It is looking at providing down payment assistance. It is working in coordination with our regional and our local cities together. It's working with the Minnesota Home Ownership Center. It's working with entities such as National Association of Real Estate Brokers, which is the black real estate professional organization that has just launched a, what is it again, Brooke? 3 million and by 2030?
Yep, 3x3x30, a seven-point plan as to how to increase nationally black homeownership by 3 million by 2030.
It's also working with NAREP, National Association of Hispanic Real Estate Professionals, which is another organization who, their president actually lives in Bloomington. It is working with the Minnesota Realtors. It is really working with the network of the Minnesota Home Ownership Center as we tackle different things on different levels, whether it is as we tackle different things on different levels, whether it is in the community of educating people around their opportunities and access to the opportunities, whether it is in our city, um, Community Development Department of reviewing our city code or ordinances. It is working with our racial equity coordinator on the plan that, the business plan that has been approved by council. It is working with the Metropolitan Council on their plan. It is all of those together. And we don't have to do it alone. And so Bloomington has, as the biggest suburb in the state, we wield a lot of power.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you're, you're lucky because if you're, if you're a housing nerd, I think we've got like five or six or maybe seven housing nerds on this council. So this is, this is a great night for a lot of us. What I want to ask about, and I'm really glad that you, you brought this up and, and Councilmember Lowen touched on this as well as alternatives to credit. Because, you know, I even, you know, a number of years ago, I remember talking with Dr. Johnson, who was, was Carlos's predecessor about alternatives even to down payments and security deposits for renters. And that's a, that's to me, I think there's a lot of potential there. And I'm curious what your thoughts are. Because, you know, I, I think even just sort of taking a step back and understanding that, you know, that, that if we're talking about increasing homeownership, that means ensuring that renters are able to transition to that. And, you know, it's really, really hard to save up for a down payment, even, even if you can get down payment assistance. So what, you know, I'm, I'm curious, excuse me, for more of the, the discussion and thoughts about, you know, policies and actions that can be taken to sort of address that side of it. And, and, you know, what, what supports do we have for, for renters who, you know, as we know in Bloomington, are also often spending more than 30% on their housing to build up that savings, build up that equity to then start the process of getting to that down payment?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Coulter. So I think it's a, two tracks. One is people that just may not want to purchase and allowing the rental to be affordable for them. Affordability is really relative. You know, we say affordable, but it's really relative. But two, it's doing things like a lease with option to purchase program that maybe you are leasing and that part of that is going towards your payment to purchase that particular home. We do have in the HRA Rental Homes for Future Home Buyers where part of the rent is going into escrow to help with the down payment down the line. But maybe there's something where they can look at purchasing the home that they're in. Maybe there's a process to land bank. Let's work with Twin Cities Land Bank and see, we're in a predominantly developed city. What does that look like to buy a property and have it land banked for purposes? So it's two approach, you know, maybe it's different options to the traditional, you must save up this much money for this period of time before you can ever purchase a home. Maybe it's a different approach, but let's start thinking more creative and let's get a little bit of, a little bit radical with it. I know that's a strong word. Um, maybe call up some of our people at the state and see what they're interested in and how we can all work together to come up with something. Cause there's strength in numbers if we make it a regional approach.
Absolutely. I happen to know some people at the state.
I think you do.
I actually, the backstory here is that for my, for my day job for narrow day at the Capitol, I ended up actually meeting with, because the center that I worked for was not able to take the meeting. So I met with, with Erica and Brian Hartman with our, with our HRA. Thank you. I'm, I'm really excited by this. I, I think this is absolutely an area where we need to think creatively and, and just be willing to, to explore different ideas. One thing I've said many times before and will say many times again, there is no justification that I hate more than, well, that's the way we've always done it. And, and we, I mean, we just, this is an issue where we just can't afford to keep doing things the same way. Cause I mean, we've, we've seen the numbers. We know where we're at. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lowen?
So if we're at 14% today, I always love to do this. And we were to implement some of these programs that were on your list here, what's a reasonable amount of time to think that we could get that up to 25%?
So at 14% for black homeowners in Bloomington, in a predominantly developed city, to try and get that at 25% with just offering down payment assistance or alternatives to credit, I think you're looking at quite a few years. And the reason I say that is because we still have credit that we cannot control, which is all on its own, that is dependent with the private mortgage industry, and we still have income. We are not controlling income. So I think we're looking at double digit years to get up to 25% in a predominantly developed city. We don't have more land to try and develop more housing. And so we have to work with the stock that we have. However, I'm not a, in this aspect, I'm not a big numbers person. I'm more of are people educated? Do they have access to the opportunity? Is the opportunity equitable? And can they stay in the property? Because we can get the number up to 25% and then people can't stay in the property.
Yeah. And I always just like to have some kind of measure and kind of know success. And I think you should, we should also add in there, our maintaining folks as well. I think that's absolutely what we ought to be thinking about. So I, I'm not sure when we can bring this back, but I'd be real interested to see how quickly we can get this rolling back to the council so we can get this moving. So I don't.
Well, that, that was actually my next question. What are the next steps here? Where, where do we head next?
So the next steps actually are to do a little bit more information, more research, put together of what a program would look like, identify sources. Prior to that, go to the HRA board, present to the HRA board, get their direction and input. And then really once identifying the source to start out with a program and also who can do it. Capacity for staff is a little bit low, but I think it would be beneficial to look at community partners, especially culturally specific focused community partners in this aspect, which could be a little bit quicker. So the next step is to take information to the HRA board to get their input and their guidance and direction. Then to put together information of where funds could be and what that would be and what that program would look like. And then come back after that. So I'm really ambitious. So I would say about three months.
Very good. Councilmember Beloga and then Councilmember Carter, was your hand going up? Councilmember Beloga and then Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has, and it's not necessarily directed to you, Erica. Probably more so to the manager, but are, are we at the point where we can dedicate funds from the COVID 11.4 million dollars to community housing projects like this?
Mr. Broogie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Beloga will be back on July 26th to talk about the American Rescue Plan Act and the eligible use of funds. There is a provision within the eligibility criteria for spending those dollars in areas within the city that are economically disadvantaged. And so some of the requested funds from community development in the HRA are likely going to be eligible. So we'll have more information about that when we come back next month.
Good, because I think there's an initial seed fund that needs to be identified to start these programs off. And that seems to be a wonderful opportunity for it. And happy to hear that it fits in with the program requirements. So thank you for that information.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a quick comment and I don't know if, I don't want to put Ms. Jackson on the spot or anything, but just a quick comment that this, that housing and then some of these ideas have also been elevated in the Racial Equity Steering Committee. So more of just kind of a heads up and FYI for my colleagues on council here. I don't, I don't think we need additional comment, but just want, wanted to say it for awareness.
Thank you. Council, is there anything further on this? If not, thank you. Ms. Walker, thank you for joining us this evening and thanks for the information. This was a very helpful discussion. I think it was very enlightening in a lot of different ways. And it was, as I think you've heard from folks here, it was encouraging also. I think there was some encouragement and some enthusiasm to head in this direction to try and find a way to get people into their own homes. And I think we, we just need your expertise and the expertise of others and a few of those federal dollars. And maybe we can make this all work in one way or another. So.
We do better when we all do better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 8.1, a discussion on our Opportunity Housing Ordinance. And again, Ms. Coleman, but this time joined by Mr. Markard from our planning department. Good evening.
Good evening again. Yeah, we're here to talk about another housing item. And we do have a presentation and Ms. Wilson is sharing. So next slide, please. So we were before you back in March of 2021, talking about some updates to the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. Those were approved. However, the council called out, I think, 10 different items that you wanted to discuss a little bit more here in June. So that's why we're here tonight. We are going to focus on six of those items in the interest of time and we can go into detail on the others. But we particularly want to focus on these six. So next slide, please. So first item, a quick one, engineered wood. And this, the photos here are of a couple of projects that did use engineered wood, not in Bloomington. But in March, the council added engineered wood to the list of alternative, less expensive materials that could be utilized. Specifically in facades that don't face the public street. A concern was raised that inferior products would also qualify as engineered wood, specifically Masonite. So our proposal to avoid that scenario would be to allow engineered wood only when it is consistent with the exterior materials policy. And this is the approach we use with metals. They're allowed if they're consistent with the policy, not allowed if they're not. So our recommendation would be to include that with our annual miscellaneous issues ordinance update. Probably come before you in the late fall. So if you're okay with that, we'll use that approach on engineered wood. I'm seeing several head nods. So I'll move on.
Okay. So you're, are we giving the head nods on these? Okay. Yes. Yeah. Unless, unless there's discussion on any of these, everybody, somebody just shout out if we want to discuss these or if we're okay, let's keep moving. Onward.
All right. Next slide, please. So the next issue has to do with storage requirements. And just want to point out that there are obviously several amenities that apply in multifamily housing. And whether or not a city requires those amenities, in some cases, it's very common to require amenities, you know, things like landscaping or off street parking. Most cities do that. And then we have other, you know, types of requirements that are either uncommon or very rare. One of the uncommon required requirements that Bloomington has, has to do with exterior storage. It's a requirement that's been in place since I believe the 1960s. We reviewed it back in 2015 with the council when we updated our multifamily performance standards. At that time, the council wanted to retain the standard. So we still do have it today. Next slide. So specifically the standard applies only to non age restricted units. And it requires one storage space per unit outside of the unit of at least 96 cubic feet. And to give you a sense of what 96 cubic feet is, that's if you think of a four, four foot by three foot and then eight feet high, or it could be arranged differently, like over a parking stall in that dimension as well. That would be the minimum that's required. Now Bloomington has incentives through the Opportunity Housing Ordinance that reduce that requirement by 50% for the minimum affordability level, which is 9% at 60% AMI. With more affordability, that can be reduced even further by 75%. So in our experience, some developers provide more storage than is required and do not charge for it. And then other developers feel the standard is too high. And they do charge, you know, month to month. I believe the last project that came through charged was $50 per month. And we've found anecdotally that the usage really relates to the amount that is charged. If there's no charge, it's a very high usage rate. If there is a charge, it can be a lot lower. So next slide, please. So we've heard over the years, many, many compelling arguments, both in favor and against having a storage standard. This was in the packet and in the interest of time, I won't go into, to detail on this. But just to note that we do have competing objectives and many strong arguments on both sides of that. Next slide, please. So a couple of options to think about. And as was discussed during the Just Deeds item, we have a racial equity action teams that are looking at various standards through a racial equity lens. And this is one of those standards that we would like to run through that process, have that review completed. And that has not been completed so far. But a few options to think about as we move forward. Certainly we could keep the existing standards and, and the incentive levels. You could certainly eliminate the standard altogether. Most cities do not have the standard, specifically all the cities around Bloomington, do not have the standard. You could certainly reduce the affordability level needed to qualify for that higher level of reduction. And then another possibility is to allow an exemption. If the amount of storage within the unit exceeds what is typical by a similar amount. So we'd have to come up with levels that are typical for different bedroom counts. And then if you have enough beyond that to meet the standard in the unit, then you would be exempt. But as we look at this further, we're interested in any initial thoughts that the council would have on this, on this item.
Well, I do think this would be a good one, I think, to run through the, the lens of racial equity. And I, and I know it's been an ongoing discussion that we've been having for a while and have had. I, I would like to see different options, different possibilities and to reduce the affordability level to qualify. I'd like that. I mean, not to cast dispersions on our developers, but to have them come in front of us and say, nobody wants to rent storage space at 150 bucks a month. So clearly there's no need for storage space. And so that's a little disingenuous in my mind. And I think we can, we can find a, 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 a level there where it's, we could provide this amenity because people have stuff. We've, we see that in all of the, the storage units or the storage companies that we have here in town. And I, I think it makes sense to be able to provide it at the place that they live. I don't know. I, I would look for more suggestions or options on this, but I do think this is something that we need to look at a little bit more carefully and continue to look at more carefully. Councilmember Lowen?
I don't need to repeat what you just said. You said that very eloquently. The only other thing I would add to what you said is this fourth option that's on here is intriguing to me. I'm, I'm really interested in that because it just, it seems to me that the question I've always asked myself, having, you know, both live in a private residency now and living in an apartment in Bloomington. You know, I gotta tell you, my first place I lived had a magical closet, was huge. It was not outside of the unit, but it was inside of the unit. And I thought that was fine. It worked just fine. And so if that could be done in lieu of, I think that's a great way to kind of move it down the pathway. But I, I can't, I mean, I think you've put it well in there. So.
Councilmember Martin and then Councilmember Coulter.
Uh, thank you very much. You know, I, I think I read a book growing up. It wasn't a magical closet. It was a wardrobe. Narnie was involved. But I, I agree with that sentiment as well. I think number four in particular here is interesting. I'd be curious if we move forward with looking. I'd be curious if we move forward with looking at that, how that interacts with our hotel conversions, moving to longer-term residential, especially because one of the first proposals we've seen there were micro units to begin with. So as they're looking to retrofit that with out-of-unit storage or include that, is that adding complications based on the square footage they'd be projecting?
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, to kind of pick up on this theme, you know, one, excuse me, one question I've, I've always kind of, excuse me, sorry. I've always kind of wondered about is, you know, is, is, does it make sense to have a standard that's, you know, one unit per dwelling? Right? Or is, or is it, you know, it doesn't make more sense to have it as a total square footage based on number of people who live there? So I, I think that kind of relates to that discussion as well, so I'd certainly be interested in that. I would also be interested in talking about the third option there. And I, and this is a point I plan to bring up later in terms of more broadly, you know, what we're doing to sort of targeting, target and, and strengthen the, the OHO incentives to get at that, that deeper level of affordability. Because we, obviously, we know that's where we're struggling, and so, you know, I, I think sometimes we forget that government is a market actor in these situations, right? We, we set the rules and regulations, we have, we have that say on the market. And so I'm certainly interested in that aspect. I think of the broader conversation in terms of what are we doing to kind of get at that need that we know exists?
Anyone else? Again, Councilmember Beloga, Councilmember Nelson, give a shout if, if I miss you, please. All right, onward.
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, sorry, no, I put my hand up, you didn't miss anything. I put it up after you said something, so. I'll just reiterate my point, I, I'm perfectly fine getting rid of this standard. It's not necessary in any community around us, I don't know why it's necessary here. And I, I do think it impacts affordability. But I am very, very much open to running it through the racial equity process to see if there is different information that comes from that and that I could learn from in that process. So until I see that, I would maintain an open mind on it, but, you know, I think I've been clear about in general where I stand on it.
Understood.
All right.
All right, please.
Next slide, please. So the next issue has to do with height bonus, which is part of the opportunity housing ordinance. So Bloomington regulates height through a height map, and this specifically is the height map that we have. Divides every parcel into the city into various height zones, ranging from two stories to no limit altogether. Next slide. So within the opportunity housing ordinance projects that meet that minimum affordability level, so 9% at 60% AMI, they qualify for a one-story height increase. We haven't had any projects, and I believe, I think it's eight, have been through the opportunity housing ordinance review process. No projects have actually utilized the incentive. And that's been because they've all been in areas that allow four stories or greater. So they haven't had a need to utilize it. However, it can be a really, really important incentive. If the project is in a two-story or three-story limitation area, it could be a make or break incentive in terms of the performa and make a very large difference. So because of that, staff does recommend retaining as it is and to continue to allow that one-story height bonus in, throughout the city.
Thoughts on a height bonus?
I think I'd agree with staff's recommendation on this, especially if it hasn't been utilized yet, I think. To see how it works and see how it plays, I think makes the most sense.
All right.
Councilmember Nelson with his hand up. You got to shout, Sean, I can't, I can't hear your hand go up.
Sorry. Just a quick question, so we didn't use the height bonus on the project off of Old Cedar? I thought we had a discussion of the, related to that project, but maybe that was just part of the planned unit process and not part of the OHO, or am I, is my memory wrong?
Mr. Mayor Boosie, Councilmember Nelson, no, that is in a height zone of four stories, I believe. And, well, actually, we can pull it up if we go back one slide. So yeah, that is in the, it's actually in the airport height limit area. So yeah, that did not apply in that case.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I think the broader point on that, I know there were some questions and concerns raised in terms of where that height bonus would be relative to other residential, and I assume just for, as a practical matter, like shading studies and things like that, would all be done as part of a project, so we would make sure we took those account, those into account. Is that still accurate?
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor Boosie, Councilmember Nelson, that's correct, shadow standards would still apply. So if, if units were significantly impacted by shadows, that is prohibited today.
Any additional questions?
Please.
Thank you. Transition to Ms. Coleman now.
Yes, thank you. So one of the questions that was posed was about performa impacts. And how do the costs of providing units affordable to households at 50% and 30% AMI correspond with the value of the incentives? Well, first off, with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the Housing Stability Fund, which we still have to determine funds for, we have estimated that it costs $15,000 or more per unit, per year, to get a 30% AMI unit. And that is an ongoing expense that's not inclusive of construction, that's in addition to construction development costs, because you're buying down that amount from possibly 60% AMI to a deeper affordable, affordability of 30% AMI. And so that's 200-plus thousand dollars for at least 15 years for one unit. So it's, it's quite expensive to get to that deep affordability, and it's an ongoing expense. So that's the first thing. And so when you look at the incentives that have been applied on the previous projects that have come through the OHO, they've been applied variably. And costs have not been viewed as directly related to the previous OHO development, in the previous OHO developments, meaning the last project that came before on Cedar was six units of 30% AMI. And that came through with a housing provider. However, there is a three-bedroom unit in that makeup, in that unit mix, and that three-bedroom unit is going to be a loss in terms of the developer. So they're going to have to go, forego the additional change in rent that they would have been able to collect if that unit was 60%, because there isn't something else from us, at least. There isn't something else from us that makes up that difference of what that 30% unit is going to be. So that would be 200-something thousand dollars that, just for that one three-bedroom 30% unit. And the reason I say it's going to be necessarily a loss for the developers, because the housing service provider that they are using has vouchers, but there's a difference, there's a max on that voucher for people at that income. And so the cost of a three-bedroom unit in Bloomington, that max is probably, it's probably about a thousand dollars difference per month for 60% rent. So that's why I say it that way. The value of incentives varies with each site. We haven't actually been able to put a value on each incentive. We haven't been able to say, open space at this much open space is going to cost this much in the performa. Therefore, we're taking that much and saying that should be put into units. So it varies. We don't have a baseline of what the values of each incentive may be outside of maybe a parking stall or a storage unit, something that's built that we can say, this is what it would cost to build that. And then costs vary with market conditions, as we can see with the rising construction prices, right? So that, that's really a, a hard one to pin down as each project is different. And so the next steps would be, in a supportive study, there's a need to update the Nexus study. In that supportive study, let's look at that. Let's specifically look at that and say, well, what is a, what is a value of the incentives? And what are, what are we trying to accomplish here? And is the value monetary, or is the value livability? Is it humanity, right? So that would be the next steps. Next slide.
Before we go.
Oh, yeah, please, sorry.
Councilmember Lowman?
So when I hear 200,000 dollars, I think back to the conversation we had earlier tonight. When we talked about East Bloomington House, I think you said it was 200 and?
200, about 270, 280,000 is the median cost for East Bloomington home.
And when you say that the ongoing cost is, is going to continue, so it's not just 200,000 dollars, it's going to be?
So that was 200, so 15,000 dollars per unit, per year for 15 years? Would be about 200,000 dollars for that one unit. And that's basically because they would all, the occupants would always need to qualify at 30% income. And so there's a difference between what that rent could be at maybe 60% or 80% compared to what they're paying, and so.
So when I think about that, I, I think about the ownership conversation we had earlier. And so I just, when I'm, I'm, as a policymaker, I'm asking the question, you know, you know, do we need to have more balance, you know, to that equation?
Harmony? I don't think we can have balance, but we can try harmony.
Harmony, I, I'll go with that word too, I like that even better, go with harmony. And so I just, I just think about that, you know, in terms of, because right now I feel like from a policy perspective, we have a great imbalance. Right now, we have a lot of focus on rental properties, but we need to harmonize that a little bit more when it, with respect to the ownership piece. And so I just, I just, from a long-term sustainability perspective, from a finance standpoint, Mayor, that's just, that's the thing that I get concerned about, that we really just need to figure out a way to change that paradigm sooner rather than later.
Thanks, agreed. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So this 15,000 per unit per year gap, how does that compare to a developer who may purchase a NOAA property and want to rehab those? And where there are, then it's naturally occurring, I, I would assume this number goes down significantly. But I am making a huge assumption there, so would love to hear your response to that.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. So I cannot say that the number goes down significantly, because in preservation projects, when someone purchases it to preserve those units that may be naturally occurring affordable housing or NOAA, they're only inspecting a small percentage of that building. And usually, it's different than what they thought when they got in there. Therefore, the costs go up. And if you have to incorporate, bringing it up, because everybody deserves to be in dignified decent housing, bringing it up to a certain standard, but then also maintaining the affordability, you could be looking at more than 15,000 dollars per unit for a NOAA property, depending on the shape of the property and how old, which we are seeing a lot older property, I was, it's 2021, so obviously, we're seeing older properties now. But it depends, and I don't think that number goes down significantly.
That's really helpful, because I have heard, you know, people in different conversations bring up NOAA and that we haven't been spending enough time on NOAA properties, and that maybe that's where we can really hit that 30%. But again, that seems to not necessarily be the case, so I appreciate your response.
Yeah, I think for both of you, Councilmember Carter and Councilmember Lowman, it's a both-and. It's a both-and. It's not a either-or. Okay, next slide, I was just double-checking if Councilmember Beloga, Councilmember Nelson had anything?
Yep, I think we're okay.
Okay.
Please.
And so then, the next issue or concern that was brought up was, given the value of incentives, should more units be serving households at 50% and 30% AMI be expected? Well, that goes back to previously said, you know, the value of what it costs to get to that deep affordability. And so previous research that was done, the 2019 BAE Urban and Economics Quantitative Nexus Study, and then the 2018 City Comprehensive Housing Needs Analysis, were both done to get us to this point of where we are with the OHO. However, in that Nexus study, it was suggested an update of every three to five years. Well, nobody thought about COVID. We didn't know it was coming. So I would say we need to probably look at updating that study by the end of 2022 and start to ask these pointed questions and to incorporate that information so we can be better informed on what we would like to do. And so deeper affordability, as I cited before, requires additional public investment. Again, we don't have to do all that by ourselves, but we do carry quite a bit as the local municipality. But it's also multiple sources. And as you know, we have projects that come forward that have Lytech, and we provide TIF, we can provide Affordable Housing Trust Fund. But it's going to require deeper affordability and clarity. Be, when the projects are coming forward, that we expect and want these units. And so knowing before you really put your project together that you're going to need to incorporate these units, and what does that look like? So better, better having that conversation upfront. I think when the OHO was put together and was brought out, 50 and 30% units were a concern and a need, but now it's like a super focus on it. And so we're shifting with this working document as we should. And so, like I said, to update the comprehensive housing, housing analysis, housing needs analysis, and the Nexus study by the end of 2022, with specifically asking and looking at estimates for incentive values and costs provide deeper affordability. Any questions or comments?
Questions or comments?
Okay.
Onward.
Next slide. And then ownership opportunities, because I just love talking about it, right? No, this was actually a question by council. And so how can additional affordable ownership opportunities be provided? So Councilmember Martin, I'm so glad you brought it up earlier, it goes back to your question. We do need our lobbyists at the, at the state to help with the restrictions on condo development. That would be a part of it. It's a combination of ownership and rental developments. We are predominantly a developed city, and so new townhomes, we don't have the land like that to just develop new townhomes. And then single-family homes, we do have some single-family homes, but it also may be really looking at existing homes that may be at an entry point, that what could be done there and supporting that. Then development partners, we need to engage a little bit more with our development partners around what ownership opportunities are needed and what's the, the development cost to develop those and provide affordable options for homebuyers. And so again, everything that I have is, we need to update the supportive study, and we need to ask these questions and do the engagement to get these answers and to have a better picture. And then from there, lead with a manual about our expectations and what we would like to see in terms of development and what our goals are that we're achieving. I think that's the end? That is.
Any questions on ownership opportunities?
Yeah, I do have one. I was surprised that we didn't see zoning on, on that, on that list. For the, the homeownership opportunities.
Are you thinking in terms of the single-family zoning?
Yep.
Oh. We're, I mean, that's a big one. And as the HRA, I know we've had discussions with reviewing different things of zoning, but that's a very big one, and I won't, I'll kick that to Glenn.
Sure. And the reason why I say that is, is that we, we talk about, you know, that, that we're already developed. So then obviously, the next question is, you know, just from having a planning background is, okay, well, how do you solve that problem? Well, it's zoning, right? I mean, you, you would change your zoning. So at least having that discussion or starting that conversation. And we may decide that we're, we're not going to do that, but I just, I, I think, I don't know how you can look at homeownership without looking at zoning, given our, our development, where we're at for mature environment. So I just, just one councilmember's perspective, so.
And Mayor Boosie, Councilmember Lowman, we do on our Planning Commission work plan this year have a review of single-family and two-family zoning standards. So that project is underway, and will be coming before you later this summer and, and into the fall. So we'll have a lot of discussion on that. Also looking at ADU standards, Bloomington allows accessory. Also looking at, uh, ADU standards, Bloomington allows accessory dwelling units or ADUs today. Uh, we're looking at those standards in more detail, should we allow detached ADUs, for example? So that will be coming forward as well.
If I could just, uh, I really would like to see it included with this discussion too. I, I think we should certainly go down the route of the planning, but I think you just, you can't keep those two things separate. I think you've got to look at both of those things together, uh, when you're, when you're looking at that. And I just, um, you know, certainly the condo piece that, uh, Councilmember Martin talked about is certainly going to be at the legislature, but I think the single-family housing, as you're looking at that, that's going to determine whether or not, what we can do. So I think that discussion cannot be, um, you know, held separately, so.
Anything else on this? All right. So it sounds like, uh, to update the nexus study is probably the next steps here to move forward, so.
Yes.
All right.
All right.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much. On to item eight point three on our agenda, which is a discussion on franchise fees and their use. And I know that, uh, I just, I see Julie Long, I see Lori Economy Scholler is with us. Very good, Julie Long, uh, please, go ahead. Take us through this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, Julie Long, the City Engineer, and Bob Simon, um, Senior Civil Engineer, myself, will present the franchise fee, uh, information to you. Next slide, please. Um, and we'll just keep going to the next slide after though, first we'll go through the goal and history. The goal for the franchise fees was to provide a sustainable and consistent funding source for elements of the payment management program. So the only piece is currently not funded by franchise fees is the PMP road reconstruction. So again, the goal is to have a sustainable and consistent funding. Next slide, please. Just to give a little, little history, uh, the council implemented the franchise fees back in twenty fifteen. It started in twenty sixteen and part of that was, the, the goal at that time when we modeled the financial piece was, uh, at year five, we would increase the rates. And then, um, scheduled rates increases after that would be every two to three years. Then in twenty sixteen, we began collections, sixteen to present. We've been utilizing those fees for those elements of the, uh, payment management program. In twenty nineteen, the council had a study session with staff and Public Works, and we discussed the opportunity of including sidewalks in the payment management program at that time. No decision was made then. And then last summer, due to COVID, um, management, we delayed, um, scheduling the rate increase for twenty twenty-one and moved it to twenty twenty-two. So we're before you tonight, looking for an increase in rates to do, um, and we provided four options. So as we move through this, um, I think the next one is your section.
All right, these next ones will go fairly quickly. Uh, we just wanted to highlight some of the projects we've used the franchise fees to date with. So you'll see both the park and right-of-way trails on this first slide. And on the next slide, you will see our seal coat program and our, um, mill and overlay per, projects. Can I get the next slide? And then on the next slide, please. So since twenty sixteen, we have milled and overlaid thirty miles of streets. And you can see they are across Bloomington. Next slide. You will see a hundred and thirteen miles of seal coat that we've also used the franchise fees to fund, uh, again, across town. Next slide. Um, on this slide, you will see that we have eight miles of right-of-way trails and one mile of park trails, and that's probably only important to the engineers. Um, users probably just look at them all as trails. But you'll notice that our nine miles of trail reconstruction have all occurred on the west side, and that has a function due to the development of how our city was originally constructed. Next slide, please. Um, so status and condition, next slide. We have three hundred and forty-one miles of street and our pavement condition index is what we use to rate all of those streets. Um, we call it PCI. Um, so council is very familiar with seeing our pavement management program, talk about the PCIs of our roads. Because, um, our trails are mostly bituminous and asphalt, we're using the same ra, rating for that. And we have forty-three miles of asphalt trails throughout town. We have six miles, which would fall into the reconstruct category, which is about, um, which we would call a red trail. Um, unfortunately, due to the thickness of trails and not having any concrete curb and gutter on the sides, we can't mill and overlay those four miles that are in the middle, like we do with our roads traditionally, and we have thirty-three miles of good trail. Next slide. We also have two hundred and ten miles of concrete sidewalk. Uh, seven miles of those are in poor condition, um, either slabs have settled, they're trip hazards, there's something, they're, they may be excessively cracked. We also have twenty-three miles of what we consider deficient width, so they are narrower than five feet, which is our current standard for sidewalk width. Next slide. So this is a map you'll see of our sidewalks that are less than five feet across town. Next slide. Um, this, these are our pedestrian ramps. Um, with the Americans Disabilities Act, there are several guidelines, uh, requirements for a compliant pedestrian ramp. On the right-hand side, you will see an actual compliant pedestrian ramp. It has the truncated domes, and then there are about twelve other criteria that we measure, a number of different slopes, landing areas, that sort of thing to become compliant. On the left-hand side, you will see various iterations of what the standards were over time, but they are all now considered non-compliant, um, pedestrian ramps. Next slide. So we have forty-three hundred pedestrian ramps across town and we have twenty-three hundred are deficient. Um, that sounds pretty bad, um, and it's not great. But when we were doing our ADA transition plan, MnDOT indicated any community that had above twenty percent compliant was doing pretty well because, as you saw on the previous slide, the, a lot of the standards have changed and they kept changing every two years. So things you built, you know, two years ago are no longer compliant today. Luckily, the standards have leveled out and we're making good progress on those. Next slide. Um, back in January of twenty twenty, uh, Faith Jackson and I, um, came to you and talked about some structural racism components that we actually have here in Bloomington by not including sidewalks in our franchise fee. Um, and based on the development of how Bloomington developed, on the east side, we had a lot of concrete sidewalks developed because at the time that was the appropriate thing, that was very common. And as we moved further west, we had a lot more bituminous side sidewalks or trails. So we don't have those same bituminous facilities on the east side. And with most of our pavement management program, we can fix sidewalks with our reconstruct and overlay programs. But one of the twists in our, um, pedestrian system is Hennepin County doesn't own the sidewalks within their county right-of-way. The city owns those. So we don't have a mechanism to get ours back out to those, um, segments on a regular basis. So they've just continued to deteriorate. Uh, next slide, please. So this is a pavement management program lifecycle graph that you've seen many times. Um, if we just build something and then don't invest any maintenance dollars, our roads will deteriorate in about twenty years. But we can do some low-cost alternatives like seal coats and overlays and extend that life to sixty to seventy-five years, depending on where they are in the city. Next slide. We, as Lori mentioned earlier, with our pavement management program, we use franchise fees for most all of our components, with the exception of the reconstruct, which is funded through our property tax levy and assessments. And then our overlays are funded through franchise fees and our municipal state aid maintenance infrastructure replacement fund, which is a lot of words to say gas tax. So the Bloomington portion of gas tax, we also use for our overlay. And then the other components of the pavement management program are all funded through franchise fees. Next slide. Later in the presentation, Bob Simons is going to give you several different scenarios of different funding options we have. These next three slides are the same in all four funding o, options. Um, this is our projected need for overlays. And the reason you see ten miles versus eight miles is just because of when our streets were constructed. So we have some that are, we had more streets constructed in a couple of different years. So that's why you see ten miles now and then it will diminish down to eight. The next slide will show that we do use thirty miles of seal coat every year. And then the last slide will show those, uh, right-of-way park trail projections. So in twenty twenty-two, we're looking at doing some trails at Dred Scott, but we have several other trail components, uh, in other parks like Countryside, Moyer, Lake Gerard Park. Next slide.
So included in the presentation is some of the survey information that the council has viewed in the past. Uh, we have some information from the twenty twenty residential survey and then some of the information that you've received just this spring on the Park Master Plan Survey. So some of these are pretty fresh with you, so I'm going to go through them pretty quickly. Next slide, please. So it should be noted that the residents' perception of the availability of the pass and walkway trails are higher than last year. By, the current is at eighty-four percent excellent and good to, in twenty twenty-two, seventy-six percent in twenty nineteen. And then that eighty-four percent is also higher than, uh, the communities in our nation, um, the national, nationwide benchmark. So the next slide is more of the, um, just a comparison, I'm in a bar graph of that same information. Next slide. So on ease of walking, that rate increased by three percent from twenty nineteen. The ease of biking increased by six percent. And the little blue box there is, um, just walking versus biking. Um, in lieu of driving, increased again by eight percent. So all of those areas where it's walking, biking, and biking and walking compared to, uh, driving, all increased. Then on the Park Master Plan piece, on the next slide, um, upgrading natural trails was increased in the survey. Eighty-one percent of those wanted that particular piece. So a couple of these other graphs that are coming on the next slides. So the next one, um, you can see the top item there is natural trails, got the highest rating in this statistically valid survey. On the next slide, again, on this piece here, trails of all kinds, accessible routes and connections, were again the highest ranking in, in this qualitative, uh, survey. And then on the next one, again, move off more, more off-street trails. And again, just the emphasis on trails in all of the park master plans were the emphasis there. And then those would be the survey information.
All right, next slide, please. All right, now I'll give some information on that. We've been looking at a few different scenarios over the course of the past couple of months. As Julie mentioned, we have the overlay, seal coat, and the park trails, which you, which you saw the, the charts for, the funding for those. These four scenarios that we, that we looked at were more primarily in, in regards to right-of-way trails as well as the inclusion of sidewalks and other CIP items to our franchise fee list. Next slide, please. This gives you the overview of the four different scenarios and I'll, I'll show you some maps and, um, I'll just give some more information. But the high level of the four scenarios, scenario one being more or less the status quo, no specific change in funding strategy. It'll include the Dred Scott Trail improvements in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, as Julie had mentioned, followed by other park trail improvements. And then also a larger segment of Normandale Boulevard between Ninety-Fourth and Old Shackby Road that is in need of repair. That improvement would start in twenty twenty-six. With scenario two, it would include the, all the items from scenario one, and we would accelerate the Normandale Boulevard Trail Reconstruction up to twenty twenty-four and also begin to start adding in a half a mile of sidewalk replacement per year in more of the non-right-of-way trail reconstruction years. With scenario three, it would include all the items from the previous scenarios as well as starting to provide some funding for necessary pedestrian improvements along Nicollet Avenue. Hennepin County is looking to reconstruct Nicollet Avenue from American Boulevard down to Old Shackby Road in twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight timeframe. So we'd be looking to be doing some pedestrian improvements at that time. And as Julie mentioned, it's the city's responsibility to be funding and maintaining those pedestrian facilities. So we would be incorporating funds for that. And then in scenario four, it includes all the items in scenario three and also begins to provide funding for other multi-agency projects that we have in our CIP. Next slide, please. So here's, uh, for scenario one, you'll see in all the scenarios, the upper right corner of these maps, you'll see the increase for residential properties, um, with each scenario. It'll have more information, Lori will give more information at the end here. But we have scenario one, um, Normandale Boulevard, the larger segment not starting until twenty twenty-six. And then we have our listing of, of the different park trails as well. Uh, next slide, please. This just shows the mileage and the funds that would be needed to maintain the program with scenario one. We'd be Normandale Boulevard in twenty-six and twenty-seven, and then there's a segment of Old Shackby Road from Bloomington Ferry Road to Nesbit in twenty twenty-nine. Next slide, please. This shows the breakdown of the, the, um, proposed for twenty twenty-two. That'd be a fifty-five cent increase up to four dollars and thirty cents. Then you can see the remainder of the, of the items for, with this scenario. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, scenario two, it'd be all of the items, similar items that you saw in scenario one, but we would begin to include a half mile of sidewalks, not shown on this map, but Julie had shown the previous map of the, the deficient sidewalks. And we have miles spread throughout town that we'd be looking to start incorporating and using these franchise fees, whether it's through a PMP project or just a standalone project. Um, next slide, please. And you see here with this scenario, it would accelerate Normandale Boulevard up to twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, including that half a mile of sidewalk in twenty-six, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty, and then also Old Shackby Road in twenty twenty-seven. Next slide, please. With this scenario, there'd be a sixty-five cent increase to residential properties. Um, and then you see the remainder of increases for commercial and other properties as well. Uh, next slide, please. Scenario three, uh, residential increase of seventy-five cents. Um, everything similar to scenario two, we'd be, begin to include that half a mile of sidewalks, um, not shown on the map here. And then also Nicollet Avenue between American Boulevard and East Ninety-Eighth Street would be, would be included with scenario three. Next slide, please. And you see the breakdown in funding, funds needed to maintain in the mileage. Once again, Normandale Boulevard twenty-four and twenty-five, we'd still be doing a half mile of sidewalk in the non, um, um, uh, recon, trail reconstruction years, and then the larger Nicollet Avenue stretch in twenty-seven and twenty-eight with this scenario. Next slide, please. And then once again here, a breakdown of, would be a seventy-five cent increase for residential properties. And then you see the, the breakdown for the, the remainder of the properties as well for scenario three. Uh, next slide, please. Scenario four would be the last and the largest of the scenarios, uh, residential increase of eighty-five cents. It would include everything I've previously mentioned from the first three scenarios, but also starting to include some of the items that we have in our CIP. Um, the, the not, the off-road components of those, whether it be trails or sidewalks. Um, we have a few of those to mention, would be a thirty-five W parallel bikeway. There's a small segment, segment that would possibly be off-road between, along Humboldt, between that eighty-first and eighty-second area. Uh, East Bush Lake Road multimodal trail on the west, northwest side of town. Uh, Xerxes Avenue Corridor Bikeway, a few different segments along the Xerxes Avenue Corridor. Uh, Nine Mile Creek Regional Trail on the northeast side of town. And then also a Portland Avenue Corridor Bikeway, which wouldn't necessarily have any, uh, added off-road components, but there's definitely sidewalk pedestrian facilities that would need replacement on that stretch as well. Uh, next slide, please. This once again shows the breakdown for the scenario four, uh, the, the mileages, um, Normandale Boulevard in twenty-four and twenty-five, as well as the additional mileages for those other CIP items. And still including a half mile of walk in twenty-six and in twenty-thirty. And then also that segment of, um, Old Shackby Road in twenty twenty-nine, um, to be reconstructed. Next slide, please. And this once again shows the breakdown for scenario four and the, the increases for, for each of the properties. Next slide, please.
So to summarize and, um, get council's direction, next slide. We would be looking at all the different, all four scenarios that, um, Bob just went through in greater detail than what this ri, right up here reflects. So you start out with status quo, we start adding scenario one with an accelerated, uh, Normandale and some sidewalks. Scenario three, we build on scenario two, we actually add more improvements for Nicollet in twenty twenty-seven. And then scenario four, we build on all of those and add on for more for bikeways and multimodal CIP projects. So, next slide. Again, each of the, the price points here, scenario one, the status quo, we would be increasing, um, on both Excel and Center Point bills, fifty-five cents to four dollars and thirty cents. The commercial, non-demand, commercial demand, the larger CI's, um, it built. Built into those commercial areas are also the, the Center Point. How they break their, their pieces out. And theirs are broken up by number of terms, different businesses used. So there's different sections where they, they would put those in. And similar to that with Excel, based off of their normal standard demand, commercial non-demand is the small business and then just builds on those. So scenario one is the fifty-five cents. Next slide for residents. Scenario two is at sixty-five cents. Scenario three, seventy-five cents. And scenario four is the eighty-five cents for all of those. Again, percentage increases, it was a fifteen percent increase to get to scenario one, seventeen percent increase to, to a twenty percent increase to three. And it would be a twenty-three percent increase from this rate, our current rate to scenario four. As we move to the next slide, please. So again, just the incremental changes of residenials in each of those scenarios. From three dollars and seventy cents up to four thirty is status quo, all the way up to four dollars and sixty cents on each of those utility bills. Next slide, please. Excel and Center Point have, as we, we know in most communities around us, have franchise fees out there. We just listed several of the ones there on this slide who also have franchise fees. Next slide, please. This is just a look at some of the neighboring cities and areas around us that have franchise fees. We see Brooklyn Park at seven dollars on each of their items. There are three dollars and seventy-five cents is the gold line. And if we go all the way up to scenario four, that is the orange line across there is the bar. So we would be much closer to Minnetoka rates if we implemented this all the way at scenario four. Next slide, please. And this is just a, kind of a look at where commercials are at. Currently, our small commercial areas are at seven dollars and fifty cents, all the way up to a hundred and fifteen dollars, similar to commercial on the gas. The interesting part to look at here is Minneapolis in the center, they are at a percentage. They're not at a fixed dollar rate. And they, the, the higher usage gets a little bit lower rate percentage. So they were implementing their franchise fees many years ago. And as other cities have implemented franchise fees, our Center Point and Excel representatives encourage us to set a standard rate as much each of the year for them to calculate and put on the bills and explain the bills. So just giving you a wide variety of areas. You can look at Richfield at the bottom for their large utilization of commercial, and they're at a hundred and eighty-five dollars. Still way below where we would be at even in scenario four. Moving on, next slide, please. Our timetable, this evening, we are having the discussion, hopefully get some questions, some discussion from council on that and direction on moving forward. We have a live page ready to go on the talk Bloomington. We have an open house scheduled for the middle of July. And public hearing notice for a public hearing on July twenty-sixth to adopt a franchise fee. Then our representatives from Excel and Center Point would bring that to the Public Utility Commission. And then the implementation would go into effect January first of two thousand and twenty-two. Next slide, please. So Bob Simon, Julie Long, and myself are here for all the questions council has.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. And for anybody still with us tonight, as we're pushing ten o'clock, that, that timeline, I think, was the important part here. This is not the final decision tonight. We're, we're having a discussion, we're giving staff direction. But there's a lot more steps we have to take before we get to a public hearing on this, where we'll take all public input. And, and there's, there will be opportunities leading up to that point as well. So just to be clear on that, anybody still watching, this isn't the final decision on anything. This is council direction on which direction we want to go. I see Councilmember Beloga with his hand up and Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Beloga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we could go back to a prior slide that had the trails and the number of miles and the breakdown of mileage.
Bob, do you know what slide it is?
It would be-
It was closer to the middle of the presentation, recall, but-
Was it the park trails breakdown or was it one of the scenarios breakdowns?
It was not a scenario, it was just the absolute numbers.
Julie, do you want to try, or Chris, slide twenty-one?
Saying how many miles there were and the status of each of the-
Yeah, back, back up a few more slides. A few more. I think it was right there, number eleven? Is that what you're referring to?
It is, thank you. So, you know, through the, the process of the initial discussion, the passage of the franchise fees. It, it seems to me that we've really had about ten miles that have consistently been deficient. And, and the two deficient categories may vary. But it's always been that, you know, we're ten years old. And is, is my memory serving me correctly here? Or am I off-base on that?
Councilmember Beloga, Mayor Boosie, Councilmember Beloga, are you referring to when we first started the program that we had around nine miles of trails considered in the red? Nine to ten miles considered in the red that were deficient at that time?
No, between the, the two bottom categories, that we had roughly ten miles of non-satisfactory.
We've, we've had, we've, we've, we've had typically nine to ten miles since we started in two thousand and sixteen of the, of the not, if you want to call them non-satisfactory, the, whether, in that, in that, between that zero to thirty-six and the thirty-six to sixty-six range. That's kind of where we've been at over the past few years. There's been a few more miles that have been introduced to those categories, but that's, that's kind of where we've been at.
And-
I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, it, it verifies my recall on that, so thank you, Bob. And, and now we've gotten five years into the program and we've done some good things with the program, but we're still treading water. And my concern is, is that adding sidewalks, which are already addressed during reconstruction and overlay. And adding in, in scenario four, the trails seems to distract from this objective. One of the things that, you know, we, we're, we're doing a good job on the overlay and all the other aspects of what's being done in the fund here. Except for the trails. And I, I use the, the characterization that we stayed at the same level of deficient trails through five, six years here. And, you know, we, we did this so that we could improve and we're, we're treading water. So someone has to kind of get over to me. If, if we need to fund this at a higher level, I, I understand that and I support that, I agree with that. But then to add other items which absorb part of that funding. I'm, I'm really looking for a plan that reduces our deficient trails significantly over the next five years. The funding of the sidewalks are being done today in reconstruction and overlay. And to add those out of the funding source of this subject that we're talking about. Reduces the availability, same with scenario four with the trails, in my opinion. So please help me see this in a different way if I'm seeing this incorrectly.
Ms.-
Ms. Long, Mr. Simon.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Beloga, we are treading water, but we do not currently have a funding mechanism for our sidewalks along any county roads, whether it's Niccollet Avenue, Portland. We don't have a funding mechanism. And with Hennepin County's projected project in two thousand and twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-eight, we will be in front of you asking you how to do this and how to fund it. We've already given Hennepin County a heads-up that their current program we can't afford. So I don't think we'll be making progress if we don't start looking at how to address some of our sidewalk needs. It'll take us about-
And I appreciate, yep, and I appreciate that. It's just, you know, if, if my objective is, is to reduce the deficiency in our trails. Can we do that by adding in funding of the sidewalks on those county roads that were responsible for the sidewalk replacement? Given with the rate increase. And, you know, my, my instinctive or intuitive look is, is that if we do those scenarios. That will be ten miles of deficiency five years from now when we look at this again.
So Councilmember, I just want to clarify, you're, you're looking at, you, you want to make sure that we spend more on trails, but still would like to try and find a way to, to take care of the sidewalks on the county roads, is that correct?
Yes, and I, I think it's outside of this fund is what I'm suggesting.
I think, I think you're right, I think it's outside the scenarios that have been described here. And it would take some, some recalculations to try and figure out how that might work and what the numbers might be there.
Yeah, because otherwise I think we're going to be still treading water five, ten years from now on the trails, which was one of the leading items. When we initiated this program back in two thousand and fifteen.
Understood, thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions here, just to make sure I understand things. When I looked at the maps for trail sections, all four of them, there was the right-of-way trails and the park trails. And I was a little bit confused because my understanding is the Gerard Lake path and the one at Marsh Lake are not paved currently. Is this proposing to pave unpaved trails?
Ms. Long or Mr. Simon?
Just, just location, just locations in that area that have paved trails, not the, not the, not, not the segments in their entirety that are not paved currently.
Okay. So there, there are paved parts of the Gerard Lake loop around the lake?
I believe that was-
That it would, would chips.
I believe there's small, I believe there's small segments at the, at the entrance to the Lake Gerard parking lot.
Okay, I, maybe my memory of walking through there isn't as good as it had been. So, okay, I just want to clarify that we weren't adding additional new trails, kind of to Councilmember Beloga's point of repairing the deficient ones. And at, at great risk to myself here, there's another item that I'd bring up. When we look at the, the trail maps, and I think we've talked about this before, but Normandale Boulevard, which is also a county road, has beautiful paved trails on both sides of it. It appears that the plan here is to extend those trails on both sides of the road down to Old Shakopee, which, you know, being someone who lives like two blocks from there, that, that would be great. But looking at the needs and things, why, why have a trail on both sides? Are there cost differences between a sidewalk and a larger trail? Could a sidewalk be on one side, a paved trail on the other side at much lower cost or some lower cost? I also look at Old Shakopee where it looks like a trail will be improved. And I'm reminded that just two blocks to the south of that, we restripe roads for bike facilities. I believe we just redid trails along Auto Club, which is not that far away there, headed east-west. You know, we have these multiple facilities within blocks of each other in that area going from probably Bloomington Ferry over to Nesbit. That, you know, you get three different choices and yet we're trying to find funding for some sidewalks in other parts of, along county roads and things like that. So I'm just concerned about, you know, are, are we over-investing in one area? To the detriment of either taking care of the existing deficiencies or improvements that are necessary throughout the city.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, we concur with your Normandale Boulevard assessment. What we're showing you is trail on both sides because it is out in either twenty twenty-four if we accelerated or two thousand and twenty-six. So we have not done the community outreach to find out what the community wants. And based on our experience further to the north, we ended up having people who lived on the east side of Normandale Boulevard really want the east side to be the trail. And the people who lived on the west side really wanted the west side. And because it was a county road and it's, the crossings are limited, we ended up building a trail on both sides. We do have an alternative priced out where we're only building trail on one side and concrete sidewalk on the other. We're trying to minimize right-of-way expenses and retaining wall expenses. But we didn't feel as staff that that was our decision to make at this point in time. So we wanted to put in the larger funding. And then if, because our program is a pay-as-you-go, if we, the community did decide they wanted the lesser option, then we could accelerate some of those other choices.
Good, thank you for, for doing that. I think my last question on this is, during the presentation, it was mentioned that the trails aren't eligible for like a mill and overlay or some of that routine maintenance that we can do on roads and things like that. Are there any different ways to build those that would reduce the long-term cost of them? I mean, would it be money well-spent to put in some type of curb and gutter on them? Obviously, probably not a standard residential one, but of some type that would help them so that you could do that. Is that possible? Is there any cost savings in the long run so that we don't put the community in the same position twenty years from now?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, we have looked at that in the past. And the added expense now doesn't provide long-term savings across the project. So it is cheaper to build one trail now and then a brand-new trail in thirty, forty years, as opposed to build the more expensive version now.
Thank you for the information, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I guess a couple of questions and then I'll pitch in my somewhere between two and eighty cents, I guess. On the front end of things, as we're looking at the way we're prioritizing some of these projects, I know it's been mentioned a couple of times that this is going to have an equity component kind of layered on top of it. Is dependency on multimodal transit or transportation factored into, say alongside the condition index? To say, sure, a, a trail on one end of town might be in a little bit of better shape than a trail on the opposite side. But it's way more heavily utilized by folks that are dependent on getting to the bus stop or being able to get over to, say, a hotel on the east side, things like that. or being able to get over to, say, a hotel on the east side, things like that? Or is it just sheer the condition of the pavement?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Martin, in the past, it was just dependent on the condition of the pavement. That is what we adhered to, but we completely acknowledge that we may, we need to change how we're doing it. And we have been talking with MINDOT. They have what they call their space diagrams. And so they have different criteria within them, whether you're within a half-mile of a transit stop, what is the percentage of people with no vehicle in their home, and different factors. And so as staff, we have started to explore that, but we have not fully developed a plan to bring forward to council to use as evaluation for our projects.
Okay, well, good to hear it's in motion. Another question, so at the time, assuming we're able to allocate the funding for it and we go in alongside the county, would we also be looking at things like crossing improvements then as well? Things like visibility, traffic calming, thinking of the county roads right alongside schools that we've talked about previously?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Martin, yes, we would be looking at that. We anticipate that Nicolet Avenue project would have a large public outreach component that would talk about crossings or bike use or, you know, do we want a rapid-flashing yellow beacon? Hennepin County is not a big proponent of hawk signals, but I mean, maybe a hawk signal is most appropriate. So we would look at those different opportunities. Maybe we put in, you know, curb bumpouts to try and slow traffic. But we haven't done any of that design or anything. That project isn't in our five-year horizon, so it's just kind of out there.
Gotcha, thank you very much. Yeah, and I guess just kind of where I'm coming down, that makes a lot of sense, that's helpful. I obviously elected to serve the entire city, but represent District Four. And as we've seen tonight, there's an awful lot of disparities in terms of who's needing these multimodal options, affordability, I guess. And as far as there's a perception of an east-west divide, I think looking at sidewalks along things like Portland and Nicolet compared to trails elsewhere in our community could serve as a reminder for some of those divides. So if an option three or an option four is what gets us there, I'm very conscientious of cost burdens in the community, especially when we talk about tax levy later on. But if those higher-end options are going to get us to some very long overdue improvements on those sidewalks in particular, that's where I'd want to look at heading.
Additional questions? So I might have missed it, but the curb cuts for the ADA compliance, are those, we're deficient on about half of those, is there a timeline to get those done to stay in ADA compliance?
Later this fall, Mr. Simons will be updating our ADA transition plan and will be bringing that forward to you. What we have proposed in our 2016 version was that we were going to update all those ramps with our pavement management program as we came and did those streets. So it would hit the vast majority of them. And as we've discussed, we would still have some issues on Portland and Nicolet and that sort of thing.
And I should also mention, I mean, the goal was to have all of the pet ramps inspected by last year, but due to the pandemic, we didn't have the staff to be able to do so. So those numbers that you see, we're still in the process of inspecting the rest of the ramps within the city. So those numbers will change every year. I think there's between 125 and 150 usually ramps that we replace with the pavement management program. So we are chipping away at that number, it's just, it's, we're getting, we're getting to the point of them all being inspected, so.
And didn't we just have the discussion about sidewalks on Nicolet Avenue not too long ago, when Hennepin County did significant work on Nicolet Avenue? And they're going to rebuild Nicolet Avenue in 2027?
Yes, that is their plan.
It was just a restripe?
Just a stripe.
Oh, okay, so it wasn't a, there wasn't significant work there, it was, okay. Council, additional questions? So what would be the general consensus? We heard Councilmember Beloga with his input on perhaps we haven't seen, perhaps there's a scenario five or six that we need to look at and consider. I don't know where the rest of the council is in terms of that thinking. Do these scenarios perhaps not go far enough, are they not focused enough? What are your thoughts on that? Councilmember Carter?
So I guess the way that I'm thinking about it, having, you know, not been involved in the conversations when they originally were happening, is more about not just kind of our recreational infrastructure, like our trails, but also our pedestrian infrastructure. So in my mind, and especially as somebody who's a runner and a biker, you know, I think about how I can get across town or I can get from one place to the other, not just going for a bike ride through Highland. And so, and I know just through my conversations with a lot of people, door knocking, you know, to Patrick's point, or to Councilmember Martin's point, sorry. You know, the issue of the sidewalks on the east side really has come up over and over and over again. I personally had a friend whose son fell off Nicolet, the Nicolet sidewalk, and was hit by a car and walk up and down Penn all the time where the sidewalk butts up against that four-lane road, and it's very unpleasant and unsafe. And so I just, I guess my priority would be, I would be supportive of an increase of some kind, and I would want to include sidewalks and the ADA improvements to the ramps. So not really wanting to point to a specific scenario at this point because it sounds like there might be some changing of those. But from my perspective, I do think we should be prioritizing sidewalks and the ramps, too.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, sorry. You know, I've been thinking a lot about sidewalks in particular on the east side. I used to live over in that neck of the woods. And, I mean, it is a real noticeable issue when you're out walking those streets. And I guess to Councilmember Beloga's point, I do want to make sure that the franchise fees are kind of doing what they initially were set out to do, that we are, excuse me, making progress on that and addressing the trail issues. But I, you know, I think, again, I think, you know, we can encourage some sort of creative thinking here and how we're addressing some of those sidewalk issues as well. And I guess one question I have, and I'm assuming people who are a lot smarter than me have already thought about this. But, you know, my recollection is that franchise fees, and maybe this is part of the reason for the increase, franchise fees have been pretty flat, pretty stable for quite some time. And, you know, I guess my question is if, you know, if we, what is, what is the sweet spot in terms of targeting the increase and the rate at which franchise fees are increased to ensure that we're not just sort of patching a leaky bucket here, right? Like that we're actually collecting the revenue to ensure that we are meeting our needs given that nature of franchise fees?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Councilmember Coulter, I think that's a really good question. Ms. Economy Scholder mentioned at the very beginning of the presentation, but I think it always helps, especially for residents, to just sort of reiterate where we started and how we got to where we're at back in 2016 when we adopted the franchise fees. We did so for a specific reason, and that was, and let me say, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, a fee is just a tax, right? And so if we're going to do this, why don't we just do it through the property tax? So the place where the council came down back then, it was the majority of the council, it wasn't a unanimous vote, was that the franchise fee allows a much more specific dedication of funds to a specific purpose predictably over time. And so the volatility, if you will, with property tax levy is, from year to year, the ability to dedicate taxes towards a certain thing is much less predictable, right? And so the franchise fees were intentionally dedicated to PMP and trails because of the council's priority at the time to get after this issue of the declining infrastructure. And back then, we set a four-year timeframe before that first increase would actually come along. And we deferred it last year because of the pandemic and not wanting to have that economic impact. So that has deferred some of the maintenance, that one year affects the model. So the, you know, what we're trying to accomplish here to get to Councilmember Beloga's comment is essentially trying to play catch-up. And so this 10 miles continues to be 10 miles, but that's because we have so many miles and every year they decline and degrade a little bit more, right? And so there's always going to be a certain amount of lag. I think the, maybe the direction that council could give to staff, if you're comfortable here, is I think we want to try to prepare for a certain amount for people to react to, right? And, you know, there's a lot of need, right? And we have multiple needs across different areas. The council can always go back from whatever the number is that is being proposed when setting that final number. So maybe one possibility is to prepare for a scenario for number. And at the same time that we're preparing the community engagement and setting the schedule for the public hearing, is to have staff take a look at pulling the sidewalk piece out and have our CFO model that within the CIP, because we can use capital bonding, can we not, to do some of the sidewalk work in the future, that would be a property tax use, right? And so there's going to be a cost impact, it would just be somewhere else, right? And so if we pull that out, how does that allow us to maybe accelerate the repair of some of the existing system? That's what I heard Councilmember Beloga asking and some of the others here is, you know, is there a way that we can try to do both? Now, having said that, I'm getting daggers from Lori here, is we're going to come back and have a conversation about our CIP within the next month or so, too. And that is challenging currently as well. So it's with a little bit full disclosure that, you know, we're trying to navigate a difficult picture with our capital investment plan, too.
And Mayor and City Manager, just that if the sidewalk piece, depending on the dollar amount, it needs to be sizable, say, $2, $3 million, so that when we sell that bond, an investor will buy that. If it's below the $2 million mark, the interest rates climb on it and it's, we might not get as many bidders. So issues involved with different pieces.
In case you were wondering, he was talking about me, just so you know. I'm in full agreement that we need to spend more, I think, on these trails and on the sidewalks. I'm just not a big fan of franchise fees, never have been. That being said, I do think we may have a way forward here. If we lay out a number, as Jamie said, to pick a number, whether it's the 55, 65, 75, or 85, or a different number, and then perhaps kind of work our way back into it as opposed to the number, and then specifying exactly what it's going to be, too. So are folks most comfortable? I'm hearing a lot of appetite for spending on this, for, to try and catch up, to try and make sure that we have these amenities that people have told us they wanted and that they're valued. And the pandemic has proven their worth, apparently, as people were out and about, and all of a sudden they discovered our biking and hiking trails, which I think is a fantastic thing. So I'm, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I'm hearing an appetite for some investment in these, in this infrastructure that we need and that people are asking for. And so would that number be, I mean, do we have to throw out that specific number? Are you thinking, Mr. Verbrugge, or?
Look at staff and see what their preference is in terms of how we approach the engagement and the preparation of the public hearing. But I think having a specific number would probably be better.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess along those lines, would it make sense to go with something like that? I think option four was 85, knowing then we'll do some homework on pulling the sidewalks out, and maybe that's step one to walking things back, once we've seen more about the CIP.
That might make sense if we, kind of like a preliminary levy that we set at high and we can always dial it back as we get more information and look at things a little bit more clearly. Councilmember Carter?
I'd be supportive of that approach, of that recommendation.
Councilmember Nelson, I see your hand up.
Yeah, first of all, I would support that. Second of all, Mayor, I'd support you and your preference to not use franchise fees and to wrap this into the overall tax levy and budget. And, I mean, I think if it's a tax, let's just recognize it's a tax and build it into the budget, in my opinion. I think people are willing to pay it, and I think people enjoy having that and want it maintained and improved. The other thing is if it's in the tax levy, it becomes a bit more progressive in terms of its impact throughout the community. So I think that there are some benefits to having it in the tax levy as well. So just wanted to support you there, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Loman?
I don't want to throw a wrench in it, but I wonder if it makes some sense if we talk about equity to take both the trails and the sidewalks out and put those into the tax levy? Because then we can ensure that those would be treated equally. Because my concern that I have is that, you know, I share what Councilmember Beloga talks about. When we originally started talking about this, then we included the trail piece in there. And then I don't know how far you can expand that to where, you know, that you're just starting to punish some of the commercial sector as you're doing the franchise fee. So I just wonder if our true goal is to try to do, try to keep those things as equitable as possible, lift them both out, put them in there where we can attack those the best way, and then figure out how to keep the other pieces that are in there, we can, you know, keep that at a lower rate because we'd be able to handle that, and then we'd be able to best be, because I just don't think we're going to be able to, equitably be able to work with sidewalks if we take it out of this. And then if we leave the trails in there, well, is there enough, you know, oomph there? Because I just don't know what we'd get at that fourth tier, you know, just for trails. And then we get the sidewalk piece on the other side, now you're raising taxes both ways. So I just, my preference would be to take them both out, have them separate.
I don't think I would go quite that far. I think we've, I mean, we have this established in such a way, we can talk about different ways to accomplish this. I think to keep it moving along, I think that would derail this. And I think there's a desire, we've got to keep it moving, to make sure that we actually get something done here and take advantage of this opportunity. So I mean, I think it's an interesting discussion, I think we should, let's set the price point, and then let's continue this discussion in terms of what we would do with the community outreach, with the engagement, with the desires of the folks that we're going to be talking to, and see if we can't work back in toward, back into what we're comfortable addressing, whether it is the sidewalks, whether it's the trails, how we end up doing that. But I think to keep this moving along, I don't think we can, I would hate to try and derail it and try and recreate this as, right now, based on the work that's been done already and where we are at this point. That's my thought.
Well, I think you've got enough folks to go that way. I just think from an equity standpoint, you're not going to get there. But, I mean, if you want to keep it moving, but, I mean, that's the whole, you know, part of the discussion that we've had earlier is about we have, you know, structural and systematic, you know, things that don't get taken care of. And I just don't think speed can be the, inconvenience can be the way we go for it. I certainly will support that, Mayor, but we can't allow that to be the way we move forward on these things. So I just understand the lateness of the hour, and I totally get what you're saying, and we got to move forward. But I just, I would challenge that paradigm.
I appreciate that, and we can continue this discussion, I think, as we kind of work through this. So are we, is our council direction to set it at the 85 cents, to set it high, knowing we can come back? To set it at that 85 with an understanding that the discussion isn't quite complete in terms of what the scenarios are, what we're going to do with that 85 cents? And we can kind of work our way back into this, is that, am I seeing nodding heads? All right, is that helpful?
Yes, thank you.
Make things more difficult now, no? A little of both, okay. Very good, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks much. Item 8.4, our city council policy and issue update. Mr. Verb- Mr. Verbrogie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Just a couple of quick items here. First, I sent out to the council this evening notification, we forgot to put it in your weekly update last Friday, that there's a Coffee with a Cop event tomorrow. So if you are available, and also for residents who may not have seen it, that information is available on our website, and I can probably bring it up here real quickly because I had it open for a reason. It'll be at 1:00 tomorrow on Tuesday, it'll be at Mugshot's Coffee over on France, just a little bit north of Old Chocopee Road. So it's a nice opportunity to get out and engage with some of our police officers. The other thing I wanted to update the council on, I had previously shared as we were watching the legislative process unfold, that the tax bill, as we understood it to be moving forward, did not include the sales tax exemption for public safety capital projects. Our understanding today is there were some last-minute machinations and the public safety sales tax exemption has been reinserted into the tax bill. And my understanding is that a couple of our local legislators were pretty instrumental in making sure that that happened. So if indeed the tax bill ends up passing at the end of the session here, as we understand it to be today, we will certainly make sure that they get recognition for those efforts for our fire station project, that means about $250,000 in savings, just on sales tax for materials. So that's, that's good for the city. Watching the rest of the legislative session as it's coming to a close here, I think that for a number of the items that we've been advocating for, we're in generally good position. We've been watching the other issues that have been the more difficult to negotiate and they do affect our operation. The housing bill was one of those issues that has taken a while to get to because of the eviction moratorium. The public safety bill has taken a while to get to because of negotiations on police accountability and police reform and overall funding of law enforcement. So those issues seem to be closer to resolution. The last, the last thing that seems to be coming together here is the capital bonding bill, whether there's going to be one and what size it is. We don't have a stake in that. We don't have any specific projects in the bonding bill, but as they often say at the legislature, the bonding bill is the grease that lubricates the rest of the agreements. So hopefully here, they will figure it out in the next 24 hours because they have to be done by Wednesday at midnight. So, so we'll be watching closely and we have a full report coming from our staff and lobbyist on July 12th, but we'll certainly let you know prior to that, when we have information about what's in the final agreements.
Any questions? Council, anything to add on policy and issue updates? Councilmember Martin?
Yeah, just real briefly, Mayor, just because it was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that now would be the time to address it and some of the folks that have spoken to it so far are constituents of mine that have also emailed about it. But just in terms of reconsidering our vote about that zoning change around the cultural centers, it just kind of brought to mind, there's a Franklin Roosevelt quote that I wish I could remember off the top of my head, because it's a really good one, so I'll read it. "It's common sense to take a method and to try it. If it fails, admit it frankly and try another, but above all, try something." And we have tremendous amount of opportunity before us. I think we, I'm very excited, out of the conversations we had tonight about ways to innovate around housing, ways to advance equity, even into our infrastructure, sidewalks, things like that. And when it comes to invigorating the future of the city's economy, I think the fact that entrepreneurs got together and came to us with a really innovative, neat idea for a business and a cultural center, especially at a time that we're trying to welcome communities of color like those they'd like to serve into Bloomington to feel welcome and put down roots, the fact that staff worked with them to put together a framework to make it doable, to make it presentable to us, to make it sustainable long-term, I think it's amazing. And the fact that this council was willing to say, you know what, we'll look at this as it moves forward, we'll make sure it's making sense for the neighborhood, we're going to try something. We've got a lot of goals that we, and we're going to try something and we'll iterate as we go. So I guess just to put it on the record for myself, I have no interest in revisiting that vote, because initiatives like that, projects like that are what get me most excited about the future of this city.
Well, thank you for bringing up Councilmember Martin, and I was going to lead to that eventually, but I was going to do, I didn't commit that we would at least offer it up. If anyone would like to revisit our decision from June 14th, to make that, those changes to the city code, which affect the FD2 districts, it was simple language changes, didn't have anything to do with a specific development, it had language changes to the code. And as promised, I will offer it up. If anyone would like to bring it forward and say we want to consider this, then obviously it would take four votes to bring it forward and reconsider it. And if we decided to reconsider it, what I would like to do then is put it off to a future date, so we can have another public hearing on this, to not simply talk about it ourselves here as we're pushing 11 o'clock on Monday night. So I will open it up. Is there anyone who would like to revisit our vote from June 14th on the code changes that we made?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Beloga?
Councilmember Martin had a number of good comments, but I think we also need to address some of the particular comments that were brought forward. And there was a reoccurring one by the three, four, or five people who spoke during the public comment period, and each one of them mentioned precedence, that doing this means that then you have to do it in another location, in another zoning. And examples were brought forward about step vans that were rejected and now will need to be approved, and garages would need to be built rather than tear down an old one to rebuild a new one. And I think it's important to address some of that specific questions. And I would ask the city attorney to give us a brief overview about how precedence plays into this, since that was one of the most frequent reoccurring themes of the questions asked.
Ms. Manderscheid, would you like to chime in on this one?
Sure, Mayor members. I think that, I don't know that I exactly followed the nature of the sort of examples that were provided during public comment, but I think it's important to talk about and to properly frame the action that was previously taken and to remind us and sort of reframe the action that was taken at the June 14th meeting. And that was a, it was a privately initiated zoning text amendment. So they were asking that our zoning code, which says, which divides our city into various zoning classifications, and then within each zoning classification lists uses that are either permitted or conditional. And so this particular privately initiated zoning text amendment was a request that you all ultimately approved to add a new use, that being the cultural campus, to the FD2 zoning district. So that action by amending the zoning code added a new use that is allowed in all of the FD zoning districts. So that was what happened. It wasn't in response to a specific project at a specific parcel. So just as a point of clarification, with regard to precedent, there is, there are, you know, as you know, a wide variety of actions that you as a council take. In some instances, the analysis that we ask you to take is a case-by-case analysis. For example, on a conditional use permit, you are asked to look at the specific, you are asked to look at the elements in the code, but then a specific case-by-case analysis of that particular parcel that is seeking to have a use that the code has declared and that you all have declared is subject to certain conditions based on a wide variety of considerations. In other cases, a property is a permitted use, and when it's a permitted use, there are no conditions. It is just simply allowed by law as is. So I think that that is perhaps the background of what some of the examples were that were provided during public comment. And when people talk about precedent, there is not much real precedential value in a conditional use permit, because each of them is a case-by-case analysis. By comparison in a permitted use, there's a bit more of a precedent, but in that case, again, the code says if X is allowed and X is asked for, then X is approved. So certainly can respond to more specific examples if they are provided to us with regard to a particular parcel, comparing it to an action on another parcel or something like that. But generically speaking, that is how zoning-related considerations come before this body with regard to specific parcels.
Thank you, Ms. Manderscheid. I think in summary, what you're saying is, is that it has to be a very similar case to be treated as a precedence, rather than the examples that were used of a garage in a residential district as opposed to the change that was made in the FTD2 code.
Mayor members, oftentimes garages come with considerations related to setbacks or design, or, you know, the location on the parcel. And in those cases, we get into a whole nother different set of considerations related to variances and it's beyond sort of uses. It has to do with not whether a certain use can occur on a property, but rather how that property in its entirety is where pieces of use are occurring on the property. So for example, setbacks, height, that sort of thing.
Again, thank you for that full and complete explanation. And I think in many cases, it confuses the public when they ask for a revisiting of an item by council and we stay silent. So to make it more affirmative, what I will do is, is motion to revisit the FD2 zoning and put it out there for a second and see if there is an interest.
We have a motion to revisit our decision from June 14th? Do we have a second?
Mayor?
I'm sorry. Ms. Manderscheid?
I'm sorry, as a point of clarification, Councilmember Beloga, were you on the prevailing side of that vote on June 14th? I can't remember what the vote results were.
Yes, I was.
I believe it was unanimous.
I think it was.
Okay, thank you. Just a point of clarification.
Yep, thank you. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Without a second, the motion dies. So thank you for bringing that forward, Councilmember Beloga. And I think it clearly is the decision and the intention of this council to move forward with the decision that was made on June 14th and to continue with that, the code language change as it relates to a cultural campus. So that's what I'm understanding. Is there anything else for our council policy and issue update, other than the fact that Summer Fete is coming up? 6 o'clock start down at the Man Shell with one of my favorite bands, Power of Ten, fabulous band, and then fireworks at 10 o'clock, so please join us if you are able to. It's fantastic time, a bit abbreviated this year because of obvious reasons, a late start and a variety of other things, but really looking forward to it, so hope you can all be there. Is there anything else? If not, we will move to item 8.5, which is a closed session for discussion of our Fleet Garage location acquisition. Just for the record, state law does give city governments an opportunity to go into closed session for a variety of reasons, not many reasons, but a variety of them, including negotiations, HR issues, and things such as this. And we are going to use this opportunity to move into a closed session, and then we will come back into open session simply to adjourn. So if you're watching at home, you can, you could probably tune out now, because we're going to go into closed session, simply come back and say, meeting is adjourned, and that'll be that. We won't be making any decisions in the closed session, it will simply be a discussion and a direction for staff, and then ultimately, as I said, we'll come back into open session to close. But I will need a motion.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, before we adopt the resolution to close the meeting, in consideration of time, I don't want to artificially truncate discussion because of 11 o'clock, so it might be appropriate to have a motion to extend beyond our 11 o'clock for the purpose of completing our agenda. We have this scheduled as about a 45-minute item. I'm not sure it'll take that long, but I think if we say, you know, 11:30 at the latest, that we can work with that.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to extend until 11:30 or earlier if needed, no later than 11:30, past our prescribed 11 o'clock stop time to discuss this item. Hearing no further, council discussion? Ms. Hekeldinger?
Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. And now I would look for a motion to adopt the resolution directing the closure of the public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close our public meeting of the city council. Hearing no further, council discussion. Ms. Hekeldinger?
Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Mr. Mayor and council members, the Webex meeting invite has been emailed to you during the meeting this evening, so if you want to close out of this meeting or leave this meeting, we will be able to come back to it, but there's another meeting invitation awaiting you. So maybe take about three or four minutes if anybody needs a quick transition here and then start up again shortly after that.
Okay.
We'll be using that sound system. We're meeting back. Crazy.
We need to.
[1163.83]